Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to tonight's special city council meeting. This meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bruno.
Here.
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 For the record, ladies and gentlemen, Alderman Mike Clemens is absent this evening because he is attending a family function that has been planned for nearly a year. He sends his regrets for not being present this evening. He also sends the following message. Anyone who wishes to contact Alderman Clemens with respect to his positions in either of these topics this evening are welcome to do so. You can reach him through the city's email address. With that, let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to begin this evening's city council meeting with a message of thanks to Chairman Chris Lawson, Chairman of the Board of Kane County, and to our friend, Mr. Ricky Sparks, the Executive Director of Facilities for Kane County, for allowing us the privilege of using this room tonight. We appreciate their friendship and we appreciate their hospitality. This meeting is not being broadcast on Comcast or AT&amp;T, nor is it being livestreamed by the City of Geneva. It is, however, being recorded by our IT manager, Mr. Peter Collins, and tomorrow, the entire proceedings will be put up on the City of Geneva's website. On the evening of Thursday, July 4th, I corresponded with the city council and shared some comments about the process by which tonight's meeting will follow and the expectations of everyone present as we consider both agenda items. Following the reading of each agenda item, I will ask for a motion and a second. Upon recognizing said motion and second, the matter will be officially placed on the floor. I will then invite members of the public who wish to comment on the matters to do so. Please note that tonight's special city council meeting is not a public hearing. It is a public meeting. The public hearing was held by the Historic Preservation Commission on both matters, and accordingly, said public hearings were completed and closed. All residents wishing to speak can do so by joining us at the podium. I respectfully ask that you step to the podium prior to speaking, state your name, and please spell your last name for the benefit of our city clerk and the official record. Any and all remarks presented must be directed to me as the presiding officer of this special city council meeting. Any comments addressed to a city council member, a professional staff member, or someone in the audience is not allowed, and the speaker will be ruled out of order and reminded respectfully to redirect their comments to the chair. The city council and I ask that each person who wishes to speak be cognizant of the time that they are taking at the podium, recognizing that there are probably others who wish to speak as well. Should I determine that you've made your comments known, I will kindly ask that you wrap things up post haste. Any and all comments that are considered not germane to the topic on the floor will be ruled out of order, and the council will be instructed to disregard such comments. I remind the city council to please refrain from engaging anyone at the podium in back-and-forth conversation, as doing so is not permissible under Robert's Rules of Order. And again, to our guests in the audience, please be respectful of each speaker this evening by refraining from any outbursts or any intrusion of anyone else's right to speak. Doing so will not be tolerated. In fact, if such a request to maintain decorum is not adhered to, I will ask a member of the city council to make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Following public comment, the city council will begin their deliberations on the matter that is on the floor. The council is charged with framing each topic based on applicable standards enumerated in the City of Geneva's Historic Preservation Ordinance and the body of testimony provided via the public hearing process carried out, as stated earlier, by the Historic Preservation Commission. Any question or statement that deviates from the standards required to guide you and your deliberations and decision-making will be ruled out of order should they be created, should they be inferred, or should they not follow the standards that we are charged to consider. Lastly, please be aware that the acoustics in this room are slightly less friendly than they are at City Hall. Therefore, it's my advice, based on having made presentations in this room and attending many Kane County Board meetings, a slower pace is often more helpful and aids the reception of your comments by all of us on the dais and certainly all of you in the room. So to my guests in the audience, are there any questions from anyone? To the council, any questions at all? Professional staff, any questions? Very well. Ladies and gentlemen, Item A, Approve Ordinance Number 2019-13 Designating in the area of the City of Geneva as the South Geneva Historic District. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Marx. Seconded by Alderman Bruno. This matter now is officially on the floor, and as stated earlier, the council and I would like to invite anyone who would like to provide any comments to please join us at the podium. In the interest of lack of confusion, I'm going to first turn it over to Alderman Bob Swanson.
Thank you, Mayor. Since the inception of this process, my wife and I have been willing participants, and we wanted our personal residents to be included in this historic district. I have been consistently communicating to everyone that both residents, constituents, neighbors, and friends, that I would be recusing myself from the matter at hand.
Bob, can you put that microphone closer to you?
I'm sorry, that I would be recusing myself from the matter at hand, and that further communication was inappropriate. Two weeks ago, we sold our home, so I no longer have a financial interest in the historic district. However, due to my participation in this process from the beginning, I still feel it appropriate to recuse myself from the matter and do so accordingly. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, a recusal requires Alderman Swanson to leave the room. Alderman Swanson will do so, and then we will contact Alderman Swanson when this matter, Matter A, on the agenda, has been concluded. Do I see, is Mr. Sparks back there, Ricky? I also want to address something else, folks, and it's important enough to address, so please bear with me. I am looking up a text message and a conversation I had with a resident that we all know and consider our friend, Mr. Peter Yee. As some of you may know, earlier today, the elevator here at the county building malfunctioned. Mr. Yee contacted me to advise me of such malfunction, and he also, he and I also had a conversation. He put in writing his opinions regarding this unfortunate set of circumstances. "Hello, Mayor Burns, it's Peter Yee. All eyes on the meeting tonight on the historic district proposal. As you know, I'm against it. I was planning to go to the meeting, but when I checked just a little while ago, I saw the sign on the elevator. So obviously, with my wheelchair, I won't be able to attend. I know others are aware of this now as well, and they are genuinely sympathetic. But, when it comes down to it, please do not postpone this meeting on account of the elevator. That is my big concern." So, I have spoken with Mr. Yee. He is en route, as I understand it. If he chooses not to attend for whatever reason, he will contact me on this cellphone. We will place this cellphone at that microphone, so he can, at the very least, listen to the dialogue this evening. We have a motion, we have a second. Ladies and gentlemen, let's begin the process by counterclockwise, first row. We're going to, everyone's going to be at the honor. If anyone wishes to speak, now is your chance. We'll just go, yep, right here. Welcome.
Thank you.
Again, your name and spell your last name. My suggestion is to speak slowly, and we do not need, under law, your address.
Gillian McNamara.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Burns. Thank you for devoting time away from your personal life with respect to this very important matter. To save time and avoid redundant commentary, these comments are the collective thoughts of the nominators of the proposed South Geneva Historic District. Lost my spot. We, the nominators and supporters of the proposed district, believe this matter is vital to Geneva's continued economic success and unique historical and natural beauty, which comes as a direct result of its continued commitment to historic preservation. Geneva's historic districts are the very reason why Geneva has set itself apart from so many other towns in Illinois. The city council represents all 23,000 residents, and we believe that the majority of these residents find historic preservation important, and it differentiates us from other neighboring communities, making Geneva special. It's extremely important that Geneva's aldermen commit themselves to the betterment of Geneva by not allowing themselves to be influenced by developers, those who seek to fulfill their own personal and/or financial gain, or the voices of just a few objectors when compared to the total population that would be in support of historic preservation. We, as nominators, receive no personal or financial gain from the proposed district, nor do the homeowners who have maintained their commitment to the proposed district. Instead, this proposed district is a gift from us to all Genovans. None of us will be in our homes forever, but when we do move on, we will feel comforted in the knowledge that we were good stewards of these most prized historic homes. Future generations, generations can continue to marvel at the unparalleled and irreplaceable architectural designs and craftsmanship. Wildlife will be allowed to thrive uninterrupted, and the amazing stories of Geneva's forefathers who once lived in these incredible homes, who thoughtfully, deliberately, and generously made critical decisions for the betterment of Geneva, should never be forgotten. Once these homes are gone, we can't get them back, and a house is not protected until it's protected. To those who think we were being disingenuous when we stated our concerns in a letter last summer to the neighbors regarding teardowns in our neighborhood, and again, in our testimony before the Historic Preservation Commission, I would simply say that my concern was increased significantly after driving through my neighborhood and noting on a map all the teardowns that I knew of, all the teardowns coupled with lot divisions, and then just lot divisions. The end result was simply disturbing. The amount of teardowns has reached an extremely worrisome level and has been working its way towards Geneva's spectacular gateway, Batavia Avenue. For example, Sunset Road, seven homes demolished, including an historically significant colonial, as well as the irreplaceable and spectacular Center Entrance Colonial belonging to the Morton Salt family. Chiba Road, four demolished homes. Dow Avenue, one demolished home. Meadows Road, nine demolished homes, two lot divisions. Dunston Road, five demolished homes. Peck Road, possibly one lot division coming up because the Schmidt House was purchased by Stephen Kuhn, the recent owner of the Atwater property. Ray Road, one demolished home and four lot divisions. Hawthorne Road, two demolished homes with a lot division and one lot division. Shady Avenue, one demolished home slash lot division. This home was a historically significant home, which Henry Bonfargo commissioned to be built by the Wilson Brothers for his daughter, and was the twin house of the Queen Anne Cottage, a Geneva landmark right next door. Forest Avenue, a new home was built on the divided through lot, which belonged to the Henry Bonfargo house referenced above. Batavia Avenue, one demolished home, and the Atwater House, one lot division. And a private drive off Batavia Avenue, one demolished home. This was why we chose to create an historic district rather than simply landmark the Atwater House last summer when it was purchased by a developer. Without the prudent and thoughtful guidance of this mayor and this city council, Geneva is on a fast track to repeat the same mistakes made in many other neighboring towns that either bowed to developers or neglected to properly protect their history. To quote Winston Churchill, "Those that fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat it." To the alderman, "Before you tonight, you have an opportunity to protect what makes Geneva special and to not repeat the same mistakes of other neighboring towns." As for Michael Lambert's recommendation to add the 10 additional homes, the aldermen need to be aware that these recommendations were made after the objectors testified to the Historic Preservation Commission that our zigzagged boundaries were arbitrary and gerrymandered. Keep in mind that the reason for this was because the proposed district was comprised of contiguous homes coupled with the voluntary requirement of the district, the exception being Stephen Kuhn with the Atwater House. Additionally, the objectors testified that our proposed district lacked a visually identifiable area that is linked by architecture, significant persons, historic events, and/or geological features. They further testified that an historic district must possess a significant concentration, linkage, or continuity of sites, buildings, structures, or objects united historically or aesthetically by plan or physical development. Michael Lambert's recommendation to bring in 10 new homes satisfied these objections. Now the boundaries cannot be considered arbitrary and gerrymandered, and the proposed South Geneva Historic District is a visually identifiable area with the same sense of time and place as our current historic district. You would think the objectors would be satisfied, yet they are not. The objectors have themselves to thank for the addition of these 10 new homes. Lastly, Geneva's aldermen have passed numerous zoning changes for increased density in our downtown area despite the objections of many residents. These zoning changes were to increase the diversification of housing types to accommodate aging baby boomers and first-time homebuyers who are not looking for the stereotypical suburban, single-family home. I think it's admirable that these groups of people were accommodated despite it requiring a zoning change. But what's extremely important to remember is that the nominators and committed residents within the proposed South Geneva Historic District are not looking for a zoning change. We are not looking for an exception to a rule or a law. We are not looking for a change of any kind. All we ask is that you vote according to Geneva's Historic District Designation Ordinance 10-6-7, which, along with the many other ordinances you were elected to uphold. The proposed South Geneva Historic District meets all six required standards for designation of historic districts as set forth in the City of Geneva's Historic Preservation Ordinance as adopted by the Geneva City Council in 2016 after numerous meetings to review and revise the draft ordinance and procedures. The Historic Preservation Commission voted 6 to 0, making it a unanimous recommendation. The proposed historic district has the same sense of time and place, the same period of significance, as the existing historic district. We understand that Bob Swanson will recuse himself from voting tonight, but we ask that Alderman Swanson, which I guess he can't now, cast his vote to ensure we are duly represented in council. We are fully aware of the magnitude and the difference of opinion in this matter, but we strongly believe that preserving Geneva's history is directly tied to protecting Geneva's future. We respectfully thank you for your professional and careful consideration.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Good evening.
Mary Lou O'Halloran, O apostrophe H.A.L.L.O.R.A.N. I came tonight because a dear friend of our family, Sarah Walkington, asked my husband and I to look at this matter, and we talked to Craig Malato about it, and they're not in favor of this at all. And her family, her husband's family, that's their family home, so they're the second generation to live in it. And I just, I thought about this a lot, and I don't know, Mayor Kevin, if you remember, the strategic plan from 1997?
I do.
A lot of people worked very, very hard on this. It covers every component of our community, from mental health to our kids, anything you can think of, historic preservation. It was updated, and Mayor Kevin, was it updated again since 2017?
No.
Okay. So, I looked at this today, and I, my purpose tonight is, I think it's so important that we hear tonight from those who are opposed to it. I'm curious, what are your reasons? You live in these homes, what are your reasons? And going back to this mission, the purpose or mission is a statement of the fundamental reason the City of Geneva exists. It addresses what we do and why. The purpose of the City of Geneva is to advance our well-being and quality of life by honoring our heritage and cultivating a dynamic, engaged, diverse, sustainable community. City of Geneva guiding principles. Our guiding principles express the values that govern our conduct. Our success depends on consistently living these principles as an organization and as a community. One, Geneva is deeply committed to the principle of full community participation. That's why it's good you're all here tonight. We honor the spirit of public stewardship and volunteerism and invite community ideas and expertise. That's what this is all about, listening. Our conduct is ethical and respectful of others. We may not always agree, but we can respectfully respect each other, that we can disagree. Our attitude is helpful and cooperative. Our communication is open and informative, it's available and accessible. We are open-minded and willing to consider all perspectives. That's why I'm here tonight, to listen to all perspectives. So those of you who are, this lovely lady gave a very solid presentation on why, and I'd like to hear why not. We maintain high standards in all that we do, and I'd like to just see us continue that as a community. There are many kids from Geneva High School who are now in their 40s, who have moved back, my children's friends, because of all the things that we are, all the things in this strategic plan and ongoing evolving strategic plan. We need to revisit it and make sure that we're communicating, we're really listening, and as alderpeople and mayor, we are really listening to the people to come up for the best solutions, and we collaborate, and we don't shut people down. We work very hard for this new community, whatever the issues are. And so, I hope tonight, those who are opposed to this are very clear to us what it is that's bothering about this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Whoever's next?
Here.
We're going to go counterclockwise here, just to keep form and fashion, so this side of the room. There you go.
My name is Denise Ward, W-A-R-D. Although I live on the east side of Geneva, I've been interested in this, and I provided testimony at the last HPC meeting. I do want to point out that while, it's been mentioned a couple of times, that the objectors brought upon themselves the expansion of the borders of the district. It was well-established in emails between Mr. Lambert and Ms. McNamara. He outlined seven specific strategies with tactics for trying to influence additional people to join the district, and if that wasn't the case...
Mrs. Ward...
Yes.
I'm not certain I understand where your comments might be going. Is it with respect to what you assume to be interference by a professional staff person?
No, it's the explanation of how the boundaries were expanded.
Go ahead and continue. I'm going to rely on my counsel here to...
Okay.
...keep a tight leash, if I may.
Okay.
Thank you.
I understood. There had been some strategies outlined. Sorry? Oh, okay. Sorry.
The mic should move for you as well, I think, Mrs. Ward, so that might help a little bit, yeah.
There had been some strategies outlined with tactics, and Ms. McNamara knew well ahead of submitting the application that the boundaries could be expanded. That's my comment.
Thank you very much.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Anna Harmon, last name H-A-R-M-O-N. I was not planning to come up and speak tonight, but since it started on this side, I just want to point out, the proposed historic district, 75% of the homeowners within that proposed district opposed to the district, and they're being forced into the district without their consent. I just don't understand how the council can get behind that. You are burdening their personal property when they have objected, 75% of the people. I don't understand it, and that's concerning. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Anyone else? I'm going to scan the room. We're heading toward the middle section. Whoa, hey, there we go. How are you? Well, I'm inviting folks to stand as they see fit, otherwise I'll just move with alacrity and...
You didn't say roll three, you just said...
I said, "I'm looking at this side of the room, Mr. James." Always good, a pleasure to see you.
Okay.
How are you?
Pardon me. Jeff James, 825 South Batavia Avenue. I'm across from the Atwater House, which is now the Teague House, which I'm, I think we should call it from now on. I live in the James House. I'm next to the East House, next to the Carver Home. I guess it's just, the question was, "Why?", and that was one of the three reasons. Who are we to say that we're not, the next home built in this area isn't the next historically significant home? The new home is going to be built across. I can't wait to see it. I want to see what's new, what's different. This spans over 100-plus years, over some 20-whatever architectures. Who's to say the next architecture isn't the next one? So I think it's a bit arrogant for us to say that we have to stick into that architecture for the City of Geneva. I think the next generation of Genovans will be just as fine and just as grand as the ones we have now. I've come here 20-some years ago. My only real beef with this town, it's not the town, it's the taxes. I came at $9,500. I've been paying $20,000-plus a year...
Mr. James, taxes are irrelevant for the discussion.
Oh, no, they are not. I beg to differ...
Not for tonight's discussions, but...
May I address it in a different way?
Oh, you may not. If you'd like to...
The second reason is the cost of the historic classification on my home. Many will say, the historic folks will say, that is somehow a benefit to me. It is not a benefit to me. It, in my view, will lower my value of my home. It'll cost me more, certainly, to improve it. I'm a do-it-yourself-a-guy. I've been improving my home for a long, long time, and this is just a... Number three is that, you know, we've been here, like I said, 20-some years, and all my neighbors, everybody's improved their property. Why would we add another level of bureaucracy onto something that's working well? I don't understand it. So, just the overreaching of government in general, and certainly in this case, I think everybody's well-intended here, I have no animosity towards anybody, I just wanted to basically allow me to do what I do for my own property. I'm the one investing it, I'm the one putting all of my labor into it, all my money into my house. Why does somebody else think they can come to my private property and tell me what to do? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, folks, I have no joy in saying this, but that's the last time that occurs. And it's not because I'm rude, it's not because I'm tired of it, it's because it'll never end. So that's the first warning. My preamble stated that if we don't at least behave with a reasonable sense of decorum, that means no interruptions, and the interruption means when someone's finished speaking, someone else is addressing the podium, just keep quiet. It's easy. Otherwise, I will ask for a motion to adjourn, because we can just do this for another two years, if you'd like. Yes, sir.
Mayor Burns, my name is Greg Cornwell.
How are ya, Mr. Cornwell?
Good, thank you. I've lived in Geneva 30 years, I had no intention of speaking tonight. However, when I got the flyer, it was important for me to at least research, 'cause I'm coming late to the game. When I moved here, I lived over at Randall Square, raised three kids, loved Randall Square. But my kids grew up, we decided we were gonna move over to the proposed southern historic district. We live in a ranch, and we could've changed it, we could've torn it down, but we didn't. We have spent a lot of money on this ranch, and we have no plans of changing it. My concern, couple concerns, would be, one, I put it up, the historic preservation standards for designation. And if you wanna talk about being opposed, my wife owned a shop on Third Street, bought a, replaced a window, 'cause it was from 19-whatever it was, but she got an aluminum-sided window, and because the Historic Society deemed you couldn't have that, she had to go back and try and get a wooden window. So, I think about that, and I go, "What if I choose to make my ranch a two-story? What is the historic district gonna say to that? What if I wanna change my patio to a deck? What is the historic district gonna say to that? To the Aldermans, you know, in Ward Two and Four? You're across the river." So, I don't know how many folks from Two and Four are here, but I think quite a few from Fifth Ward are here, right? To wrap this up, we heard about all these teardowns. Again, I'm very happy in my ranch, but let's put this on a level playing field. These teardowns, I don't know how far back they go, we rattled off. I can tell you on Sheever, I don't know of any historic homes, but I do know that the Havelcheck Home, that was, that house was falling apart. I think it was condemned. I think the house next to it was a split level that the owner couldn't use anymore. So, please tell me how those homes, just on Sheever, are historic. So my concern is the power of the bottom out, well, I'll wrap this up. Thank you for your time. My concern is with the historic preservation, and how much control they will have over my house and the Fifth Ward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cornwell. Who's next? Yes.
Forgive me.
Hello, Mayor. My name is Angelo Dangles, D A N G L E S. I live at 1010 Hawthorne Lane in Geneva.
Welcome.
If you drive from south to north on Batavia Avenue, starting at Fargo, I've been in my house for 34 years. I've seen a lot of changes on Batavia Avenue. It's absolutely beautiful today. It wasn't always, and the homes were beautiful, they needed restoration, they needed a lot of things, and they got them. Nobody told them to do it, nobody told them you can't do it, they just did it. I only remember one home being ripped down on Batavia Avenue from that distance, from Fargo to the train station, and that was an unsightly home, never kept up well, it didn't fit into the neighborhoods, it actually has a historical home on each side of it that you could call historic. This home was not historic. It became, the person who lives behind it bought it, ripped it down, and it's now their front lawn. It's beautiful, beautiful. I can imagine anybody say, "You cannot rip that house down." It was historic. Just because, and I don't, what I don't get is, I'm gonna ask you a question, how old are we going back to become historical? Is it 30 years or 40 years? What is it?
The current ordinance reads 30 years, sir.
You know, that is so ridiculous. If you look at post-World War II houses, government centers, police departments, fire stations, before World War II, they were beautiful buildings, and I hate to see any of them ripped down. They're beautiful, they had character. The new ones are bland brick buildings, flat roof, they're ugly. They're just ugly. So, why are we trying to preserve something that's ugly? I don't know. I don't know. And one more thing, the more power government has, and you guys are all good guys, I'm sure, the more power government has, the less power citizens have. Simple as that. And I don't want anybody telling me, "I'm not gonna do anything to my house, whatever I did is done." I've been there 34 years, I'm 75 years old, I'm not meant to do anything else. But if I wanted to, I wouldn't want to have it go on for two years before I get an answer, or the potential buyer of my property gets an answer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Feel free to rise on the left side of the room and head to the podium, otherwise we'll move to the east side of the room, but, oops, someone's coming up? Oh, well. Which side of the room did you come from?
The correct one. Hello, Mayor Burns and our councilmen. I'm Teresa Keenan, K E E N A N. I would just like to begin my comments with the fact that I drove my vehicle here tonight, and I have reached out to many of you with the use of my computer, because my life has embraced progress, okay? If it were according to some of these people in the room, I would've maybe driven my horse and buggy here tonight and read to you from my pen and quill off my parchment.
Mrs. Keenan, let's get to the facts at hand.
All right. I would just like to say that, you know, Ms. McNamara's arguments to me, I've seen a lot of those homes that were torn down on Hawthorne, on Meadows, on Ray, on Sheever, on Peck, many of them were not historic homes. I think if you have the data, many of them were 60s ranches, 70s ranches, some split levels, some that were just basically functionally obsolete. And, just like I said about driving here in my vehicle, homes need to progress, just as American families have. American families don't live in homes like they did today, like they did 100 years ago. I personally am against another historic district. I love the historic district that we have. I own three buildings in that historic district, but I do not live in the historic district. I dined at Giamea for half-priced pizza night before I came tonight, and went into a young couple that are neighbors of ours, and they told me they moved here from Sarasota because of the schools and the Park District. They didn't mention anything about the historic district. And I think we are fooling ourselves if we put all of our eggs in a historic district basket. I'm enamored with the historic district, and I love the history of Geneva, and I feel like, I'm so proud to tell people I'm from Geneva. I feel like Geneva does things for each other, not to each other. And it's just a neighborly, friendly community that really cares about each other. And it breaks my heart that there's all this controversy that has happened, and it just continues to go on and on and get uglier and uglier. I don't think it's necessary for us to have another historic district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilman, council people. Steve Bertheau, B E R T H E A U. I'm a new person to Geneva, even though I've lived in this area for many years. I just purchased a piece of property that was mentioned earlier as one that had been subdivided into four areas, four new homes, and I've purchased that and am restoring it back to the single home that is there right now. So I'm very much in favor of keeping the historic significance of this property as well as the city of Geneva. I look at the permitting process that exists today, and I see ample controls of management there to make sure that property is managed in the right direction. When I look at the fencing requirements, when I look at swimming pool requirements, when I look at all these different areas within the existing organization, I see ample controls to make sure that the city of Geneva stays as a proud community. And I am working with the city right now to re-subdivide this property so that it is just my single home there. I plan to make some improvements to that home and to the property so that everybody can be proud of this area. I'm very concerned about the ability for somebody without my consent to come in and tell me what to do. I'm concerned about the potential delays in review cycles and the additional costs for me to work with this property and for me to work with this home that's over 100 years old. I am not in the current proposed district right now. I'm just outside of that. But I see my concerns, if I was within that district area, you know, it's just a matter of where the property line was drawn, and I would be concerned if I had to go through additional bureaucracies for things that don't add value. I think that the permitting process that currently exists adds a lot of value and adds a lot of control, and I plan to work within that process. I don't plan to come up with a bunch of variances and this and that to create a problem and create difficulty. I see this as a positive improvement that we're embarking on, and I just don't want to get tied into a lot of unnecessary bureaucracy for that. So, I appreciate you allowing me to come up and speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could I, for a second?
I beg your pardon?
Can I come up?
Of course.
I know you passed me on when I...
Yeah, all yours, man.
Frankly, I reside at 316 Elizabeth Place. I am one of the nominators with my wife Jill, and I'm hearing all of this information about how difficult it is to work within the system and all that. I bought a nationally-registered historic home, and I'm pretty naive to the whole process. And I have no biases, because in this entire room, I know three people. I know none of you, and I know literally nobody here. I got involved because of what a developer said he was gonna do with the property across the street. When we moved into the house, we had our back porch and our front porch was sort of rotten. And I hired a contractor, and I said, "Let's replace it." And he says, "You know, this is a nationally-registered house." And I said, "So?" He said, "What do you wanna do?" And I said, "Well..." I said, "I wanna use AZEC. I wanna use a brand-new material that'll last 35 years, that I don't have to go back and redo it." I said, "I don't care how you do it, just figure out how to do it." He made up some plans, drew it on a piece of paper, showed up at the historic commission meeting in his shorts and his combat boots, gave the presentation. 30 minutes later, I had an approval. I went and spent $105,000 replacing the porch with AZEC in a historic home that's naturally registered, right? So all of the hoopla over how difficult it is, yes, in some cases it may be difficult, but in a number of cases, I think this has been blown out of proportion. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the...
My name's Webb Hemshod, H E M S H R O D T, current resident at 1010 South Batavia. I guess, one, I just wanna get it out there that I'm against it, and it's not because I'm against the Historical Preservation Society. I'm not, 'cause actually, back in '07, I was one of the original people who bought a house at 521 Campbell Street, and we redid that home together. And it was a process, but again, together we came through it, and I think it's a beautiful home. And it kinda started the whole pass, and what I think is where the restoration started going. But when I hear the comments that the nominators, why they're really bringing this up, is because the neighborhood's gonna change, there's redevelopment that's going on, there's teardowns, and that you guys need to save this neighborhood, I think would be inaccurate, because again, I'm now a family at 1010 South Batavia. That house is not being tearing down, it's not gonna be subdivided, it's gonna be restored back to what it was. That house sat for sale for 10 years before anyone would touch it, and I'm stupid enough to do it. But don't feel that, I guess, that you can just sit here that you need to save this neighborhood, because as Steve just commented, he's now gonna re-subdivide that into one big lot and kinda bring it back to itself. Don't feel that you have to be the saviors for the neighborhood, 'cause there are families that do wanna take on these projects and that will get it done. So, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this side of the room? Okay, I'm moving. Well, I'm not gonna recognize anyone for a second time, 'cause I don't wanna have a debate at the podium about what one person said and another person said, so just clarifying. So, yes, sir. Forgive me, I have a hard time seeing that far, and there's a, I'm not sure if there's a light or halo above you, but I think it's...
Understood, understood. Good evening, Carl Davis, D A V I S. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Alder people. The argument for being in a historic district seems to be one that if you join one, it'll be non-ownerous, it will possibly even be beneficial. And I think many here want to believe that that's true. But truth, that is fundamentally honest, that allows your citizenry to have faith in the underpinnings of process, that is, if it falls down, an undermining of the very facts that may very well exist. Because this process has been so flawed, your citizenry, I might suggest, has lost faith in the fact that it may very well be non-ownerous or beneficial. From the beginning, this process has been not as open, as I believe many in the room thinks it should be. It hasn't been honest. For example, the most glaring, I think, is the fact that the pitch at the beginning was that this was going to be voluntary, that it was going to be a concerned grassroots group of people wanting to get together. The intent, the truth that has come out later, for reasons that may be very well defensible, have been confusing, such that you have now added 11 homes of people that have not signed on in any kind of voluntary way. They were not a part of this, they were added without any notice. With all due respect, how can we believe you now? How can we believe this process, because it's fundamentally been flawed? This is why process is at the very underpinning of our system. Do process mean this? Due process means this, it suggests this, that the ends do not justify the means. The means is what gives us our faith in our system, in our town, in our leadership, in our country, in our way of life. That's why due process is so important. The people affected by this, they love their historic homes. We bought them, we've built them or renovated them at our own expense. We know very well what it is to own a historic home. Please don't confuse our concern for this process with the fact that we don't understand what's going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Do I see a hand in the back? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Orville Schut, S-C-H-U-T-T. And my house is within sight of this building. Didn't prepare anything, wasn't planning to speak until I listened to everybody else. But I have mixed emotions here. I believe that historic homes should be preserved. It hasn't been that many years ago, before the council, that the council decided that we're not going to expand the South District, Historic District. And what we're going to do is allow people who want designation on their homes to get plaques and put them on and put it in that way. And that was approved by the council a few years ago. When my neighbor Janet and Gerard Keating, now the Leo's Homes, wanted to have national designation for their home, I fully supported it and I spoke in front of the city council for that. Now, I stand here and I say I'm in favor of historic homes, the whole thing. But what I'm not in favor of is putting forward a petition, then packaging in that petition, not only the people that want to be in the historic district, but you don't have enough homes, you stick other homes into it, and you take people's rights away from them. And I'm totally against that idea. But I am in favor of a historic designation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving eastward? Yes. Hi.
My name's Anita Tyndall, and I am the daughter of Tom and Susan Tyndall, and they can't be here, but...
Could I trouble you to spell your last name for me?
T-Y-N-D-A-L-L.
Thank you very much.
It's important for me to speak tonight because I am possibly the next generation of Geneva, and I want to know that I know of what's going on. And it's important that the city of Geneva is heard in the situation. And it's very disheartening to see my parents in such a depressive situation because of what's going on here. We moved here from St. Charles. I was very sad to move here, but then I realized how beautiful of a city it is and what it's becoming. And I see the renovations, I see what's happening around me, and yes, it's not fun right now, but I truly think this is such a beautiful town. And that's with the ability to renovate homes, keep historic homes, all of that. But I just, it was very disheartening to see the stress that this has caused my parents not knowing this was going to be the situation before we moved here. So the next generation, I want to be part of a city that is listening to the people in the future of Geneva. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's next? Yes.
Teresa Muir, M-U-I-R. I live at 1017 Hawthorne in the New Prairie-style home. And I just wanted to make the comment that new construction isn't necessarily bad.
Thank you, Mrs. Muir. Sounds like a TV show. Is that a TV show, Mrs. ... Who else? Oh, who else? Excuse me.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Maureen Fisk. I have lived at 705 Easton Avenue for 25 years. I have just more of a question of clarification this evening. In Ms. McNamara's opening statements, she uses the collective term "we" quite often as the applicants. I would like to just have some clarification as to who those applicants are.
The applicants that are certified, the documents which are available on the city's website list those applicants. I suspect that what you might be parsing is the fact that the "we" does not include all those within the district.
I would just like to know who their names are.
Well, let's dig it up. Perhaps, Mr. Lambert, do you have it readily accessible?
The applicants of record are Karen Buckley, Bill and Amy Cook, Jill Leo, Gillian McNamara, and Marcia Engel-Ranke.
Thank you, sir.
Are those five applicants still all part of this petition?
While some of the, well, three of the applicants have filed objections, they are still part of the application. They were the applicants when this was not submitted for nomination.
So have they withdrawn from this petition?
They have not.
So they are still, even though they filed objections, they are still considered participants?
The short answer is yes.
Okay. So three of the five have formally withdrawn an objection, but they're still considered participants for this application, correct?
That is correct.
Has anybody asked why they've withdrawn?
It's not germane to our discussion tonight. If they are present this evening, they can certainly share why they have withdrawn. I have not received correspondence from, phone calls from, or any other sort of communication from those applicants expressing why they've withdrawn. I can't speak for the entire council, but obviously, if they're present this evening, they can speak for themselves.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Walkington. My husband, Joe, W-A-L-K-I-N-G-T-O-N. He's here for my support. Joe and I live at 728 Shady, and we are asking the city council to vote against the proposed South Geneva Historic District. Okay, so the question before the council tonight is whether to approve or deny designation of this new proposed district where: One, 75% of the affected homeowners have objected. Two, three out of five of the original applicants have objected, including Bill Cook, who sits on the board of the Preservation Partners of the Fox Valley. Three, the review process has suffered from the litany of procedural problems that amount to a denial of due process to the affected homeowners. Four, this issue has painfully divided our once peaceful neighborhood. Five, there is no imminent threat to any of the included properties. And six, there is little to no evidence that designating this district would provide any tangible benefit to the city. So there's been a lot of discussion tonight about the houses, districts, ordinances. And we are going to just ask that you don't lose sight of one of the things that we value most about Geneva, and that's the people. 75% of homeowners have filed formal objections. An additional 20 or more homes addition to or nearby the district have objected, and the neighborhood is filled with signs against the district. The issue has painfully divided our neighborhood, straining relationships and threatening the welfare of our community. While we understand the city has the power to designate a property without owner consent, this power has only been used twice in Geneva's history outside of the current Historic District, and never before against a private residence. There is no compelling reason for the city to use this power here for the first time against multiple private residences. As Alderman Blin stated one time, "The no-owner consent language of the ordinance is there as a last resort for important vulnerable properties." Our property certainly doesn't meet that criteria. And in fact, there are no vulnerable properties in the proposed district. Moreover, there is little to no evidence that the designation of this district would provide any tangible benefit to the city. There are other less drastic measures that should be considered first, which would protect the community's interest while also preserving the rights of homeowners as well. So outside of the disruption that this has caused to our community, what is even more shocking is the procedural problems that have plagued this process throughout. Our house was not included in the original proposed district. Ours was one of 10 homes forcibly added to the proposed district without prior notice during the public hearing for this matter. I have read the Historic Preservation Ordinance countless times, and there is nothing in there that gave the Preservation Planner or the HPC the authority to amend the boundaries of the proposed district at that late stage of the process, much less to do so without prior notice to the newly affected homeowners. To the contrary, with respect to notice and amendment requirements, the ordinance is clear. For example, the ordinance required the Preservation Planner to mail written notice to the owners of record of the subject properties not less than 10 calendar days prior to the public hearing. But the first notice that Joe and I got that our house was included in the proposed district was when Mr. Lambert made his staff recommendation at the end of the April 16 continuation of the public hearing. And we did not receive written notice until more than a week later. And, excuse me. Additionally, the ordinance includes specific requirements as to the timing of amendments, the parties who may request amendments, and the procedures by which amendments may be made. According to the ordinance, the Preservation Planner was not a proper party to amend the boundaries of the proposed district. And likewise, the HPC had no authority to amend the proposed district without the prior consent of city council. In fact, as it is currently written, the ordinance doesn't allow amendments to be made during the review process. It only allows amendments after a designation has been made and in accordance with the same procedures set forth for the original designation. The HPC should never have considered the expanded district, much less recommend it to the city council for their consideration. In sum, in view of the strong opposition to the district and the procedural problems that have plagued the process from the beginning, we ask that you please vote no to the proposed district. We respectfully submit that any purported benefit that the city would glean from designating this district would be far outweighed to the continued damage that it would cause to the fabric of our community, both to our neighborhood and to the city as a whole. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Beal, B-E-A-L-L. I'm one of the opponents of the proposed district. And I guess I'd like you to know why. I moved to Geneva as a little girl in 1977. I have many happy memories of growing up here. I moved away after college and returned in my early 30s with my husband and daughter to raise our family. So I guess if you do the math, I've been living in Geneva for about 30 years now. Because I had grown up here and still had family and friends, I felt right at home upon our return. I didn't need to stop by the visitor's center or the Chamber of Commerce or look online to see what Geneva had to offer. But a few months ago, with the proposition of the district, it became apparent that my husband and I would have to defend our home and property and protect our choice to not join the proposed Historic District. So I had a look at some print and online city publications to see how Geneva defines its identity and how its residents contribute to that identity. Scott Lieben, the head of the Chamber of Commerce, describes Geneva as "a community that has commitment of the chamber and the city to make Geneva a spectacular gathering place, to come together and celebrate our hometown life and community spirit and make Geneva a wonderful place to live and visit. All participants can enjoy friendship, laughter, and family life." There is no mention of housing structures in Mr. Lieben's note. Mr. Lieben continues that Geneva is proud of its city staff, police department, fire department, local officials, merchants, dining venues, volunteers, and residents. No mention of housing structures. Mr. Lieben even uses a quote from Robert F. Kennedy. "We must attempt to bring people back to the warmth of community, to the worth of individual effort and responsibility, and of individuals working together as a community to better their lives and their children's future." These words really resonated with me. As a parent raising our children, as my husband's raising our children, it's very comforting for us to know that our neighborhood is made up of like-minded individuals. Busy parents raising their kids, doing errands, carting the kids around, but also keeping an eye out for each other and respecting our community. We're really busy with our kids and we don't have time to think about whether or not our homes are impressing visitors to the area. And I actually question whether or not visitors are really paying close attention to our homes anyway. I had a look at the "Experience Geneva" tab on the city's website and found several blogs. 15 Reasons to Visit Geneva, 4 Cool Unusual Things About Geneva, A Day in Downtown Geneva, I Need a Geneva, A Top Day Trip from Chicago. These blogs are full of discussions about our fabulous shopping districts, our parks, the Viking ship, fried rice balls, and watermelon slushies, coffee, chocolate. But I couldn't find one comment about or reference to our houses. In this year's edition of Town Square Geneva, Mayor Burns stated that over 400,000 folks visited Geneva last year to experience hospitality and a warm welcome. That welcome is from the people, not the houses. I'm sure that's why the Ellen DeGeneres Show visited Geneva twice in the last five years. Not because of the houses, but because of the people. And if I remember the 2009 visit correctly, the show spent time on Third Street observing the beautiful Christmas walk. And then it received a warm Geneva welcome from one of its residents who lived in Eaglebrook. The show didn't cherry pick who it wanted to hear from based on that resident's address. It chose that lovely Eaglebrook resident because she had some fun Geneva stories to tell. So it just seems to me that visitors are more focused on what Geneva has to offer them. Beautiful, fun experiences of dining, shopping, and recreation. They're not really concerned with walking our neighborhood streets. They'd rather take a walk through Island Park. What is very encouraging to me is that the city is very tuned in to what the visitor wants. Section 3, Objective 5 of the city's Comprehensive Development Plan from April of 2003 shows that the city is focused on reinforcing and strengthening the traditional role of the downtown area as the city's centralized, multipurpose focal point. So again, it's not the surrounding neighborhoods that are bringing visitors to Geneva, and I question the applicant's assertion that the houses in South Geneva are really such a draw to our area. I also learned from the Comprehensive Development Plan that the city also seriously regards the input of our community, as Mrs. Ohio Larran said, in making future improvement and developments within our city. The plan states that the city shall provide an ideal opportunity to reintroduce local residents into the planning process, promoting community involvement and encouraging citizen participation, an integral component in the planning process that helps identify issues, needs, priorities, and opportunities that are important to the community and provides a foundation for future planning efforts. So here we see, when the city put together this plan, that they didn't step back to the turn of the last century to research what our departed founders might have wanted for our town 100 years into the future. And I might argue that the founders didn't have historic preservation in mind anyway as they built our town. Look at the wide variety of architectural styles in the proposed district. Greek Revival, Italian at Queen Anne, Colonial Revival, and then eventually mid-century modern. The founders of our town and subsequent residents built the homes that they wanted to live in, or at least what their wives wanted to live in. Finally, I love that our government is focused on the future by honoring the wishes of its present residents. Here's another interesting objective, number 16, from Section 3 of the Comprehensive Plan. "The city wants to sponsor and promote programs, activities, and events that foster a strong, unified community spirit. I find it very inspiring and empowering that the city government values its living community members so highly, and I hope you'll see how the proposed Historic District would not foster a unified spirit or a strong sense of community in our neighborhood at all. I hope that you've had a chance to consider all of the written and face-to-face testimonies that you've received over the past month and are listening tonight, and I hope you realize how many residents of the South Geneva neighborhood are not in favor of the proposed district. I hope you're not worried about pleasing the founders of our towns when the community of today is so upset right now." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone else? Certainly, yes.
My name is Gail Ellenbaum, E-L-L-E-N-B-A-U-M. I wasn't planning to speak, so this will be in little bits and pieces. I've been following this very closely, though not as involved, and my husband has been more involved, but he happens to be in the hospital right now, which was a little scary yesterday, so I'm a little shook up. So please be a little gentle.
Gail, let Chuck know we say hello.
Yeah, thanks. Homes undergo constant modernization, changes throughout. Towns are not static. If you live in any incorporated area, you have zoning restrictions. You have setbacks and height requirements, quality and safety of construction, building inspections, materials, et cetera. This protects all of our property values. It protects our quality of life. If you've ever traveled in rural America where they don't have zoning restrictions, you'll find one property speak and span and needs a pin, and another property has old cars in the front yard, and the lawn's not kept up, and the paint's peeling off, and no one makes them do anything differently. So I think we all agree, if we're living in Geneva, we kind of like having some incorporated zoning and property restrictions. I'm hearing about no comments or changes to historic buildings in a historic district. This really isn't factual. And that bothers me a lot, because we all have to agree on the facts and go from there and state our opinions. In the current historic district, the Larabee House on Fourth Street, next to St. Mark's Church, has undergone complete gutting. There's nothing left of the inside. There's not a stud, probably the studs, that's about it. No walls, no nothing. It was previously even moved on the lot. There's been new townhouses built in the historic district. The Merritt King property was subdivided, and new homes were built in the historic district. The historic district we have currently is not static. Creating a historic district is more about property protection for property owners and the people in the town than it is about restricting property owners. There is a desire to improve and change their home. The city, the Historic Preservation Boards and things, will work with those people who own that home. What it's more about, where I lived for 33 years in Glen Ellen, it's more about outside developers coming in, tearing down huge numbers of homes, building lots and lots of homes, and walking away. They didn't care what they tore down. They would come in surreptitiously and buy properties you thought you were selling to a family, you were selling to a developer. You had no idea that two months later, you would come back to your town and your house would be torn down, your previous house. So I think that's more why some of this is happening across the country, for historic districts or some way to protect or preserve. I think it's less about a property owner and their desire to improve or change their home. It's more about those developers coming in, and it's all profit-driven. Of course, the town gets more taxes, so maybe that helps too. I don't know. While traveling in Italy a couple of years ago, we stayed in a 900 A.D. walled city on the Adriatic coast. We had to park outside, go in the walls, go down burrow trails, you know, the streets very, very narrow. And yet, when you walked into the Bed and Breakfast, they had Wi-Fi, they had gas stoves, they had great beds, they had all kinds of modern conveniences within the structures. Yet, these walled cities are preserved. There's schools with modern computers and all kinds of things. And yet, you would hate to ever, ever have that destroyed. It's amazing. I think the biggest concern right now that you're hearing is this without permission. That makes me concerned also. I was one of the original people. I believe in historic preservation. I have a very contemporary home. It's not historic, I don't think, probably significant, but not historic. So when you start including people who don't want to be in it, that's where it starts to get very, very dangerous territory. And it does tear apart the neighborhood. It really makes neighbors and neighbors, and it's not good. I strongly suggest that the City Council consider going back to the original historic district proposed with those property owners who gave permission for their property to be included in a historic district. In the future, other contiguous properties, maybe as they change hands or people change heart or whatever else, could choose to join in, and the historic district could grow. That would be my suggestion for a middle ground. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gail. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Joe DiGidio, 1280 Meadows Road, Geneva, Illinois 60134. I'm just here because some of my neighbors told me I should come. I know nothing about this process. This is my first time. But the people against this, by the way, are very well organized. If you guys are running campaigns, you might want to get some of these people behind you, because in terms of their ability to organize and mobilize people, they're fantastic. If I ever have a garage sale, I'm going to get some of these people on my side. I'm going to make a lot of money. But one of the things I heard, a couple of things I heard that was disconsidering. The first thing I think I heard disconsidering, I think Ms. Washington mentioned it, is that the due process wasn't followed. I don't know what that means. You know, I'm a working stiff with a baseball cap, but it just doesn't sound good. It sounds like the due process wasn't followed, the right thing to do would be to go back to the beginning and then follow the process. But that's up to you. I know nothing. I know nothing about this. The next thing I want to say is, a couple of things I heard is that there were five, more than five petitions followed and three objected. And you said they still count, but then I'm wondering, you know, kind of what is an objection, then? If they're still counting, then what is the objection? Does the objection mean they're no longer with the petition? Does the objection mean there's something on the petition they didn't like, and what was that? Is that part of due process? I don't know. I just have questions, but I guess I'll wait to the patch and get my answers then. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Charles Baumann, B-A-U-M-A-N-N. I'm not sure if this germane to the whole situation, but when one wonders about the people who are quote-unquote "objecting," have they read the facts, or are they listening to someone else who is feeding them their spin? Just consideration.
Thank you, sir. Get up here.
Good evening. My name is Bob McQuillan, M-C-Q-U-I-L-L-A-N. First of all, thank you, Mayor and City Council, for having this meeting. Just wanted to let everyone know that I don't have a dog in this fight, though I do like a really good debate, and the City Council members will know that. I've read a lot about this, and again, it's not going to affect my property. But I kind of see this as a microcosm of what's happening throughout the country. We are so fearful of upsetting the minority that the majority is losing. From the testimony tonight, it appears that, I think there was only two or three people that were in support of it. Mrs., or I'm not going to call her Mrs., Mary Lou Ohioherran had a great point. Let's cooperate. Let's find a solution. I don't like the fact that the majority may lose here. Another comment was made that there's a distinction between an historic district and historic designation of your own home. That is a property owner's right to be historically designated. It is also, I think, a property owner's right to not live in a historic district, especially if they didn't live in one when they purchased the property. So I think there's a simple solution here. After a year-long of debate, why don't we just let the petitioners, who would like to have their home historically designated, to go through the process of having that done? And those who do not want to live in a historic district then will not live in a historic district. If in the future, those that are living there would like to go through the process of getting designated, they can always do that. In my opinion, that is true collaboration, and the majority wins. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McQuillan. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I can't see the hand, so forgive me. Whoever's raising their hand, come on up.
Sandy Ellis, E-L-L-I-S. I have some questions, just a few. And I'll preface that by saying, in 2011, there was the petition to make this area a historic district, the Southern District area. And it was turned down strongly by the people that lived there. And then in 2014, and I think there are still five members on this council that were part of the year-long debates about the right to not have your home designated as a landmark, the owner consent issue. And as I recall, the outcome of that whole year of debate, and I just question why this council continues to go through these meetings and meetings and meetings when they could have resolved this years ago, is, first of all, one of the outcomes was that there was going to be a supermajority vote rather than a majority vote in order for things like this to happen. Is there going to be a supermajority vote tonight?
The council seated before you tonight is considering the recommendation by the Historic Preservation Commission. To overturn the Historic Preservation Commission's ruling requires two-thirds of the City Council holding office, not two-thirds present, two-thirds holding office. And the same applies for Item B on the agenda as well.
So if there is a vote tonight, what are the numbers of people that need to either approve or disapprove?
Seven of the 10 aldermen need to vote in the affirmative to stay or uphold the Historic Preservation Commission's ruling.
And what about the two, one has recused and the other one is absent?
They don't have a vote.
They don't have a vote?
Correct.
Okay. The second thing that I remember is that they increased the cost, or they didn't increase the person who decides, or the group who decides are going to designate someone's home as a landmark. The new ruling was they were going to pay fees, costs associated. Have the fees and costs been paid up to date by the group that has started to designate this area?
I would have to defer to our city administrator for that information, since that is an administrative function of the city. The answer is yes.
Fees have been up to date? Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, forgive me, folks, if I can't see that far, but anyone else wishes to speak, If not, folks, I will turn this discussion over to the City Council, members of the City Council. Either comments to be made, questions for myself and/or professional staff who are present this evening. Alderman Maladra. And that needs to be nice and close to you as well. It should be hot.
It's been a kind of difficult year as far as changes concerned. People, for example, feel that they are... Consent is a big part of the next discussion. The communities have a point of historic elevation without consent to defer an appeal by the court. It's up to include the United States Supreme. Specifics have a right to energy. I believe that society has a right to lives. In my mind, the current historic district finds the character of central downtown, an area that is clearly destination and attracts residents. People do want to live in the district. Perhaps just as importantly, people who have here the district cite that proximity as a self-convincing area. It attracts businesses, and it attracts visitors. That is something all minds can hold up without. The current district, therefore, in my mind, has been massive businesses, residents located there, and that is the community as a whole. I can see how people in the neighborhood who are current in the new district being proposed might want to designate that area as a historic district as well. It's proximity to existing district. It's pretty obvious to see how that district is working for against the residents. Many people in this neighborhood moved to the area specifically because of the character of the established neighborhood. And I was pointing out, we see a great change in that area just in time by the City Council. In fact, that suggests that that change was the catalyst for our apparent digital successes in the 90s or 2000s. Organizations which, by the way, did not meet with the unanimous consensus, all were disested. Since 2013, by my count, there have been 13,000. I think that if we talk to people in the neighborhood, some will say yes, some will say no, which is why we're here. I think, my mind of questions is whether or not there is a lot of evidence in the community from the proposed historic district. So... The proposed method of support in the neighborhood, there would be no question. So when there's opposition, we consider some a more broad, that's just in that town neighborhood. So if there's force, a change on building homeowners, we should do so only in that that's true of the community. Is that... Would it such a district attract residents? Absolutely, but then again, I think that the attraction is there, this neighborhood is to its proximity to downtown, and all the other factors that may attract the current will attract businesses, will not, because the area is not filled with businesses. Will it attract visitors? Christmas walk, Christmas house walk, but I don't know that's sustainable for the entire year. So the main question is whether or not it serves the people, is it the downtown part that they certainly will, if the district is drawn, is much larger than that. So as I listen to my courage tonight, what I'm going to be listening for is thoughts on the community that the exhibition caused us to create this district in the face of the judgment of people who live in this district. I mentioned that, I prefer it only to the people into the district. Not that I don't appreciate the comments from all the people, how they're affiliated there, but what I think is interesting here is that there are significant amounts of judgment from people specifically within the district and of all the people who originally targeted the process, and this is backed down. So they have to find out what happened and why that happened, although we have a thought here that the decision that I did that happened. So that's just my view of this point.
Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, there's been a lot of heat and light around this.
It's nice and close, I think, to Alderman Bruno, because I know this room, it tends to bounce up top there, so.
There's been a lot of heat and light around this. I think it's important that we hear the council...
Speak up! We can't hear you.
Wow.
We heard you. I don't need the microphone.
Who is that? Just out of curiosity. Stand up.
I can't, I haven't heard 90% of the things that I've said tonight.
Well, then, sir, why don't you kindly say, pardon me, I can't hear anything?
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you speak up? I can't hear you back here. Thank you.
So there's been a lot of heat and light around this issue. Is that better?
No.
Okay, there's been a lot of heat and light around this. We've got to stay focused on what are charges here, and it's probably more confined and more prescribed than most of us think here. We have an ordinance, as it is. What we need to look at is, has the process been followed? Have the safeguards been triggered? Do the proposed boundaries meet the standards as defined by that ordinance? This is not a relitigation of whether the city benefits from historic preservation that's well-established. We've seen a lot with, both sides have been accused of untoward motives for this coming about, but that's somewhat immaterial. People disagree about owner consent. That is not germane here. We have an ordinance that does not require owner consent. We're not going to relitigate that tonight. Much like our downtown zoning effort, we are changing zoning all through downtown, and that also does not require owner consent, and this probably can be much more onerous. So, to those points, I have taken the time, I've watched virtually all of the historic preservation deliberations, and, to be honest, I've been very impressed with the pragmatic process that they've followed in looking at individual properties. I disagree with claims of improper conduct by staff. I think we've seen staff behaving as professionals with their duties should. So have safeguards been met? The ordinance, we've triggered a supermajority? That is the protection for objecting. So, you know, kudos to everyone that have come out and triggered those safeguards. Does the proposed district meet the standards? Quite easily. In fact, I've been, I'm more impressed with that neighborhood now that I've gone house by house through this whole process. It's easily is equal to the nicest areas of our current historic district. I wasn't going to get into any weeds here, but it comes up a lot. Someone did mention the facts. There's, let's see, one of the questions here. Okay, since, I forget what time period this is, to the point of how onerous this is. And again, this is getting into the weeds, because I don't think that's really what we're discussing tonight, but of the last 1,124 permits that have come before historic preservation, or triggered historic preservation review, but 10 of those have been denied.
Could you repeat that, please?
1,000, I don't, someone might, oh, in 10 years of permits, 1,124 permits came before historic preservation. 10 of those were denied, which is actually less than 1%. We, I've heard mentioned two of, why would we want to keep homes that aren't important or aren't historic? We don't. Some statistics here, and these are just, these were off the top of my head, there are many more. I remember, I had a tenure on the Historic Preservation Commission. In my tenure, that commission approved 18 of 19 demolitions. There's not a problem, as long as you make a compelling case, you can get your demolition. There's claims that can't expand your house. Off the top of my head, I've got seven massive additions to homes. You can definitely work on your house. We're only, you know, the historic preservation is only concerned with visible street-side facades. And that's it. But again, I don't want to get into more of the weeds there, because, again, I think it is, what is germane here is, have we followed the ordinance? Does the proposal meet the standards of the ordinance? And were the safeguards in place? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the dais? Alderman Caven.
Thank you. Yeah, I really want to thank everybody who was coming, giving their input this evening, as well as everybody who, I'm certain everybody that's on this council's probably had the same experience over the last two, three weeks, month. A ton of feedback from residents, varying views, obviously, but I think that that's what this type of government is supposed to be. And while we talk about the standards, and we talk about this was met, and that was, and other items were met, I think that we're here also representing the community that elected us in the first place. And taking a look at the simple fact that 75% of the homes that are directly impacted, homeowners that live in the city of Geneva that we all love to call home, don't want to have us happen. So, I mean, that, to me, I think really needs to be, really needs to be a consideration.
Alderman Caven, forgive me for the interruption. Is it fair to state that you believe the objections speak to those standards as well?
I believe that they are, speak to those standards as well, yes.
Okay.
The neighborhood that we're talking about, it is a beautiful neighborhood. There are fantastic homes that are down there. I think anybody who drives would certainly agree. Those homes have been maintained without anybody telling the private homeowner what they can and can't do to their home. We have zoning restrictions that are brought to the discussion earlier this evening, and I think they do a good job of maintaining, keeping, you know, what I believe the majority of residents want, want the community to look like. So, again, I appreciate all the feedback, but it has been overwhelming what I personally have received, and I can't speak for anybody else, because only you guys know how much you've received as well. But, in my opinion, I think that individual property owner, they're investing their money that is their home. At this point in time, when you go to a neighborhood, I think that the things that have been done have been very peaceful, successful, and have been a great benefit to the neighborhood. So, you know, for me, I am definitely willing to listen to the rest of this as we go through the debate. But, yeah, I will not be in favor of this.
Thank you. Thank you. From the dais. Alderman McGowan.
Thank you. Is this on?
Yes.
Okay. I also want to thank everyone for coming out this evening, and I hope everyone can hear me well. My grandmother used to be over 100 years old and couldn't hear a darn thing, so I can speak really, really loud if I need to. Couple things, and I'm sorry, my brain always works in very random order, so I apologize if I don't make sense. I'm a much better writer than I am a speaker. The original nominators of this new historic preservation district came from a place of peace with the best of intentions for everyone. I just want to lay that out there. Moving on. I do want to skip to a remark that I heard, just so I can try to set the record straight. This was regarding the Chamber of Commerce that I am not a part, you know, a member of, obviously, but I fully support, and this was about the views of Mr. Leben, Scott Leben. I don't believe he's here this evening, so I really feel like it's better to hear directly from a person than just to kind of guess as to how they feel about historic preservation. But I do know, because I checked just a little while ago, on the Geneva Chamber of Commerce homepage, in one of the first two sentences, it mentions historic, the importance of historic buildings to our town. So I believe it was Mrs. Beal who read a letter written by Scott Leben that supposedly made no mention of historic buildings. I haven't seen that letter, but, or I'm sorry, I don't know where the letter came from, but if you do take a look at Geneva Chamber of Commerce, their homepage, again, it clearly states that historic buildings are important to the town and to the mission.
It's the homes, ma'am.
Okay, Alderman McGowan, if I could perhaps, instead of facing the audience directly in perhaps encouraging conversation, you can share your words with myself and our...
Absolutely.
More than capable council, so.
So, that's just something I just wanted to point out, because I noticed discrepancy in the information that was being presented. Furthermore, recently after I became an alderman for the fourth ward, I met with Chairman Leben and Jean Gaines, who was currently with the chamber at that time. And they told me how important the Christmas walk was to the chamber, and the Christmas walk usually features several of the homes, historic homes, in and around the downtown area, three of which were recent, I recently toured in previous, in recent years, are in this proposed South Historic District that we're speaking of, the Atwater Home, Alderman Bob Swanson's former home, and Elizabeth Place, just to mention those three. The Chamber of Commerce Director and President, or sorry, Jean Gaines and Scott Leben, very clearly emphasized that the sales from the tickets for the house tour are what pay for the entire Christmas walk for City of Geneva residents and everyone who visits. So, in my mind, clearly, the historic homes are vital to not just the chamber's goals and objectives, but that of the City of Geneva as well. And so I really feel that preservation is important. Also, just to add on, in my campaign materials, I tried to give like an honest explanation of who I was and why I was running for council, and in there I stated that I would work to uphold historic preservation. So I, that was on my door hanger and on my campaign website, et cetera. And I distributed a door hanger with those words to thousands of homes, every single resident in the boardroom.
Alderman McGowan, forgive me, but I feel we might be slipping a little bit toward electioneering, and I hate to have that.
Oh, sorry, no, no, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to say that, so this is where, so people voted for me, and obviously, I was, I won the election and I was elected. And so I feel that I'm here tonight to carry out what I, my message, which is to work to uphold historic preservation and for the benefit of the entire city. And, okay, so just give me one moment, because I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna leave it at that for now, but I may chime in again if I may be allowed to do so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais who has not yet spoken, wishes to do so? Ladies and gentlemen, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. This is to item A on the agenda. Just a reminder, two-thirds of the aldermen holding office. I don't, well, before I recognize Alderman Bruno for a second time, anyone who has not yet spoken, wish to speak? Alderman Brunum?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. The, given the topic of this import, I would hate to delay anyone that might have outstanding permits for that district, but I would be interested in tabling this to a date certain so that we can have, so that we can have a full complement of elected representatives. I would be interested in tabling this till probably a special meeting next week when we have a full complement of our elected officials.
One moment, ladies and gentlemen. One moment, ladies and gentlemen. Alderman Bruno has made a motion to table this matter. The tabling motion does require a second, otherwise the motion dies for lack of a second. The chair has determined that there is no second. The motion. There's a second, majority vote of the council is required to pass the motion to table. A table should be made with a date certain. You said next Monday, sir?
Next week.
Next Monday is?
Do we have any?
That's July 15?
Well, if discussion is concluded here, I think we can still put that on, that agenda.
Excuse me, if we can't hear back there.
If, if we've concluded discussion here, I think we can make that a brief segment at the beginning of next week.
The recommendation, ladies and gentlemen, is to table this motion until Monday, July the 15th. Does the second concur with that recommendation by Alderman Bruno?
Yes.
There is a motion on the floor to table this matter to July 15th. A simple majority of the council will affirm that motion. If anything less than a majority of the council does not, we go back to discussing the issue tonight. Mr. Clerk, when you are ready, please take the roll call.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Kilburg, nay.
Lott, nay.
Marx, nay.
Gao.
Aye.
The motion fails, ladies and gentlemen. The main motion is back on the floor. Alderman McGowan, you've asked to speak a second time, no one else wishes to speak. Alderman McGowan, the floor is yours.
Well, I feel like, um, I really appreciate all of the comments from everyone who's here this evening, and I know this is, um, something that is weighing very heavily on people's minds, especially those who live in the proposed historic preservation area. And I do believe when, when people say that they have every intention of preserving their home and making it look beautiful, I absolutely believe that, but as they say, life happens, changes happen, and unforeseen circumstances can arise at any time, good or bad, which causes someone to have to put their home on the market. When that happens in this area, I feel that developers, both from Geneva and outside, you know, near and far, are paying close attention to this particular area of the city as being quote unquote ripe for redevelopment, or, you know, or teardowns and new construction. So, I feel that we are just trying to preserve these homes from demolition. And obviously, I'm sorry for stating the obvious, but it's nothing against the current property owners, it's whoever comes next, and that's the big unknown. So, I feel that we are following proper procedure, we are using the tools that are made available to us, the, this has been approved unanimously by the HPC, and I just feel that in the absence of any other workable solution, this is, this is the best one that we have to preserve these homes for future, the future generations of Geneva. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGowan. One moment, Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to touch on a couple of things. The, the owner consent aspect, the, the number of objections from within the district. You know, we're here charged with the long-term viability and economic vitality and the identity of Geneva. All of our, all of our, all of our decisions are related to, they're all generational As I said before, we, we change zoning, we change zoning for the long-term benefit of the community. If, historically, if you've been on the council long enough, you know, anytime there's a development project, you will, you will hear, you'll hear disproportionately from those immediately around it, whereas others may, may value it. And the, the one last bit of going into the weeds is, I forget, there was a claim that would reduce property values. Study after study has shown that property values rise faster in historic districts and are more immune to market downturns. Again, that's just a bit of disinformation that's been floating, floating about, but, you know, we have to look beyond today because there will always be consternation. Thank you.
Before I recognize Alderman Maladra a second time, Alderman Kilburg wishes to speak? You have been deferred to, Alderman Maladra. The floor is yours. Nice and loud, nice and close.
I agree, Alderman, we are here representing a hundred best interests of the affected community. That's what I was trying to get at, and I would say, I need to understand that this is a community that is great and historic. That this is a community existing in this district is, in my mind, evident, easy for somebody to say, evident, you see. You refer to this W G, and after the stuff, are you developing projects that you had to go through, always needing a gateway? In each case, we would wait for that to be implemented. In this case, as is the case with other possible third-party landmark designations, it's not necessarily evident. I mentioned the possibility to see this as a gateway, but not as one. I think the gateway component is more of a lot of the most originally proposed, we have right now. I'm frustrated with the original proposal, refers as a cherry hander, so you just have a fleet, drive, and consent, and cherry handing, brought in, a cherry hander play, and you're out there. So, that's frustrating, but the component of this, I think, that is much smaller than the district is wrong. As far as I'm getting to, okay, that's presented, and I, and I for this preservation, I say that I actually for preservation, I hope to preserve your well-being, your housing, credit, and no race. So, I don't see that this one, that we have as preservation. It's just in this case, the community is not there, and in fact, we had not been able to address this problem. So, I don't think that a day of these were reacting to the short-term laws.
I would call the question.
Calling the question is a legitimate request. When Alderman Kilburg has been recognized, the floor, he asks for that question to be called. The question will be called. Is everyone clear on the motion? An a-vote means that you uphold the Historic Preservation Commission's ruling to so designate this area as the South Geneva Historic District. A nay vote means you respectfully, based on the standards, disagree with the Historic Preservation Commission's ruling. Recommendation, excuse me, recommendation, got it? You'll notice that the agenda items both are in the affirmative. We do so for that very reason. So, an a-vote means you support the affirmative motion. An a-vote means you do not. The clerk will take the roll. Ladies and gentlemen, prior to that roll being taken, please be advised that immediately following the roll call vote, there will be a brief recess so we can switch attorneys, and we can visit restrooms and grab drinks or what have you. The microphones will be turned off immediately following the vote. Mr. Clerk, whenever you are ready, sir.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Kaden.
Nay.
Kilburg.
Nay.
Marx.
Nay.
Gao.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, as stipulated earlier in the evening, seven affirmative votes are required to uphold the Historic Preservation Commission's recommendation. The motion has failed. Ladies and gentlemen, we are back in session. On the agenda is item B, as in boy, Consider Resolution Number 2019-71 reversing the October 16, 2018 determination. Timeout. Consider Resolution Number 2019-71 reversing the October 16, 2018 determination of the Historic Preservation Commission to deny the demolition of the single-family residence and detached garage, garage located at 428 Ford Street. Is there a motion? Motion by McGowan.
Aye.
Seconded by Marx. Ladies and gentlemen, just for note and just for important announcement, this matter must be decided this evening. We are up against ordinance and law, therefore, if this goes past 10, it goes past 10. So, I will not be asking for permission to go past 10 o'clock since we are required to adjudicate this issue, if you will, this evening. So, with that, we will follow the same process as last time. All of you, I trust, have read the executive summary on this matter. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to speak to this, or the applicant, forgive me? Is the applicant present?
May I please, the council, mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm the attorney for Bob and Annette Forsland, the owners of 428 Ford Street. That's Ryan, last name Z A B O R O W S K I. We're here tonight to ask the council to reverse the decision by the Historic Preservation Commission denying the demolition of the single-family residence located at 428 Ford Street. That, that decision was made on October 16, 2018, and Mr. and Mrs. Forsland have chosen to appeal. As, as they will explain, their, their years-long attempts to renovate the property up to this point have been thwarted. They sincerely hope to get the property into a shape which will allow them to inhabit it and make it their home. This will likely require the demolition of the existing structures and the construction of a new home, but in the spirit of compromise, we will also detail a proposal for, for removing some structure, some structures and adding on that we hope you will consider should the permit for demolition be denied. I hope that the council will appreciate the amount of time and energy that Mr. and Mrs. Forsland have put into making this work for them and the City of Geneva as well, as well as the volume of documents they have prepared for your review, which I, I know is on the agenda for tonight, but I just want to put out to the council, I'm not sure who has had the chance to review it, but there is a volume here, and this is all pertinent to the discussion tonight and to the permit. I, I hope this council will adhere to its obligations before taking a vote, including those codified in section nine of the city code, which states that a demolition permit for a property within a historic district may be appropriate when, quote, "maintenance use and/or, and/or alteration of the property would cause immediate and substantial hardship for the owners." And in this case, this refers to the, to the financial hardship, which is the economic investment that they would be required to make into this home, to make it livable, to actually renovate the existing structures as the Historic Preservation Commission has required them to do. It would simply not be feasible. They would, they'd be looking to be very, very, very upside down as far as what the value of the home would be, and that's really why we're here. I'm, I'm gonna open the floor to, to Mrs. Forsland. She's gonna give you some background and tell you why they bought the property, what they plan, plan on doing with it, what they still plan on doing with it. She's gonna tell you about how they plan, plan to make it their home. They're not, they're not developers, they're not what many citizens tonight have alluded to as far as developers coming in, tearing things down, trying to exploit the market, which I think one alderman said may be ripe for redevelopment. That's not the issue here, we're not looking to subdivide the, the property, it's simply a couple looking to make the property work for them, somewhere that they can live, somewhere where, where they can make their home. And as you'll see, all of the requests have been reasonable, and they're all backed by data, they're backed by facts, they're backed by years, years now of looking to different local contractors, getting the best, getting the best prices, the lowest prices, and you'll see that they've done everything they possibly could to make this work for Geneva and, and for them. And, and that's, yeah, that's where I'll leave it to Annette now. Thank you for your time and, and consideration tonight.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Long night.
May I trouble you, madam, just for, for, share your name with us?
Oh, Annette Forsland, F O R S L U N D. We would like to take this, this opportunity to thank the Geneva City Council, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, even though I know they're not here, for all that they do for Geneva. Geneva is family-friendly, entrepreneur-friendly, pet-friendly, and good, clean food-friendly. And you, as the Geneva leaders, should be commended for keeping downtown Geneva quaint and a great destination place. With that being said, we are requesting reconsideration of our request for demolition to our home, and I'm going to give you a lot of the historical journey that we've been on. Our first house we bought was from Bob's brother, who lived right next door to us. It was a late 1800s, two-story home on West Downer Place in Aurora. Our next project was a 1940s Cape Cod and Batavia that had a carriage house and two outbuildings on the lot. We renovated, we renovated both homes. In later years, we bought 313 West State Street and painstakingly made sure that the original fir plank flooring was brought back to its original historical splendor. Everything else of historical value in that building had pretty much been taken out years previously, but we adhered, we, we worked very hard with the contractor, who became good friends of ours, and he kept saying, "That fir wood floor is never gonna look good." And I said, "No, we are gonna keep it," and we still laugh about it years later. We did adhere to the Geneva Historical Commission's guidelines on the exterior rehab, and were given some nice kudos by the former GHC Commissioner in the newspaper article at the time, which made us feel really good, because we love, we do love preservation. When we purchased the home at 428 in October 2016, we had every intention to restore and renovate the main living spaces of the home while adding a small ranch style to accommodate an estimated 25, 2,500 square foot home. We have an appreciation and respect for historic properties and efforts to maintain them, so we did not take our demolition request lightly. We did not purchase the property with the intent to tear it down, as evidence of our two and a half years of effort, countless designs, multiple architects, and years of working with the preservation planner. Simply stated, the cost to remedy the years of neglect and significant structural deficiencies would require an investment that would be approximately would require an investment that would be approximately three times market value of comparable properties in the Geneva area. While doing our due diligence, prior to closing on the property, we engaged with the preservation planner, the Illinois Historic Preservation Representative, and a local experienced contractor who had done previous historical rehab work for us. We were led to believe by the GH Commissioner that certain sections of the property were likely not to be considered historic and could be removed. That was particularly the garage and a back room of the house that is referred to as the Jelly Kitchen. We had estimated the rehab cost, not thinking the Jelly Kitchen would have to be saved, to be approximately $100,000 from a preliminary quote we received from the contractor, who walked through the house with us prior to buying, which using our experience in renovating properties did not seem unreasonable. While that amount of investment would leave us slightly over market value, we believed the large lot was a compensating factor. During the first six months of ownership, we often met either at the house or at the office of the Geneva Historical Commissioner, having conference calls with the Illinois Historical Commission Representative, countless emails going back and forth, as well as meeting with the Geneva Historical Commission on three separate occasions for design approval. Once having been granted conceptual design approval from the HPC and approval to remove the garage by the Illinois HPC, we had some interior demo work done that was approved by Darius Brishka from the Illinois HPC to get a better view of the work to be done and garner more accurate estimates from contractors. We then received two detailed contractors' bids. We requested four contractors, but only two gave us hard numbers, and found the most qualified and detailed bid to be $515,570. This is inclusive of a 10% contingency. This contractor had subcontractors come out to bid on the property itself. They literally came out to bid it. Now knowing the numbers to repair and make safe the original one and a half-story building, along with the workers' cottage that has no foundation, as well as the back room, which once was thought to be the Jelly Kitchen, which also has no foundation, required an investment far in excess of market values. We did consider other options. We attempted to identify locations within the city boundaries where the building could be relocated, and also attempted to reach an agreement with the owner of the neighboring south lot that is now vacant after that house was demolished. Neither efforts were successful. We did speak with Michael, the HPC Commissioner, throughout this process, trying to find solutions. We were given what few lots are left near the northern historic area, but we had hired a gentleman who would move the property to this one lot, but he said the utilities would have to all be, underground utilities had to be done. It was astronomical to move it. At that point, we requested a demolition permit. Turning to our demolition permit request and the hearing held on the matter, we feel that the HPC did not follow procedures or adequately recognize the city ordinance regarding historic properties in grave disrepair. We believe that the passion of the HPC lacks the adherence and guidance of the city ordinance as demonstrated by the closing comments of the HPC Chair at the October 16 public hearing, who said, "Their purview is to protect the historic community, and our request opposes that objective." We believe we factually documented what the prevailing local market values are for comparable properties, with no challenges brought by the HPC in the public hearing. We believe we provided adequate documentation supporting the cost of rehabilitation, and while some HPC members challenged the amount of the estimate, the preservation planner and others did not. In our view, those two documented facts, cost and market value, demonstrate that this property would require an unreasonable expenditure that is not justified by current market value, a point we believe the HPC did not address in their decision. Further, we believe that procedures outlined in the city ordinance were not followed and positioned our proposal in a questionable light to the HPC. Specifically, Section A4 states we were to receive written notification of any deficiency in our submission. No notice was received. We believe this could have eliminated any misconception of our submission being a lark, as one of the commissioners retorted, the perception that we supplied new information or that there was missing information. Section 6 requires that the preservation planner and another official were to confer on their evaluation and conduct a written assessment summarizing their site visit, which is to be made available to the petitioner prior to the meeting. This written assessment was never received. It should also be noted that no HPC member has been in that home to view the extent of the disrepair or offered to go into the home to view. Section 9 requires a finding of fact be supplied after the public hearing. A finalized finding of fact was never received. Our efforts have continued even after the public hearing and before we came to the city council this evening. We requested the opinion of an experienced local contractor who has done historic work in the Fox Valley. This was just within the last two months. He also concurred with the extensive cost and suggested the HPC visit the site with a contractor for a structural review. We attempted to arrange a structural review meeting with a contractor on site, but could not find one willing to assist in that endeavor. We also contacted one of our aldermen, who met with us on the property. From that meeting, a compromise idea, we believe, was spawned. Our recollection was, the idea was to demolish the back room, the Jelly Kitchen, which is behind the workers' cottage, and the workers' cottage, which can only be seen from the north as an enclosed porch, but keep the one and a half-story section of the home, which was the original home. This would preserve the original home while eliminating the bulk of the cost, we believe, associated with the rehab as we remove the sections in the greatest disrepair, i.e. the workers' cottage and Jelly Kitchen. We were hopeful with that suggestion, because we had always wanted to bring the exterior north-facing facade back to its two porches from a 1902 photograph, which, to us, would be a win-win with having the street view of the house looking just like it did in the 1902 photograph. We presented this option to the preservation planner, who replied that the HPC would not approve such a proposal. We are now left with no options, other than to appeal the decision of the HPC. Although we continue to seek approval of our demolition permit, as it would be the most economically sound option, we do ask that the council favorably consider our alternative proposal, should it deny our demolition request. We feel our proposal is very reasonable and will allow us to move forward with our lives while preserving the historic nature of our property, which we were always excited about preserving. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just to clarify one thing for the council, this evening's deliberations are with respect to the demolition only, and we cannot consider the alternative, as you so stated.
Thank you.
At this time, anyways, unless a new application is filed.
Okay.
Comments from the, anything else from the applicants?
Mayor, just to follow up on what Annette said, as I said before, these are not developers that are prospecting, looking at properties where they can redevelop something and make a buck. What the council does here tonight will affect them. This is, you know, this is their property. They have to, they need your help. They need the demolition permit approved. They have no other, they have no other property. As they said, the commercial property in Geneva, it's gone well. They did it with respect to the floor. As Annette said, they even did garner praise from the city. So I would just like the council to keep that in mind.
Thank you, sir.
Can I say one last?
Of course.
I am so sorry.
Oh, all right.
I don't know how this goes. I've never done this before in my life.
You're doing great.
I'm never going to do this again, either. This gentleman introduced himself to us tonight. I am not going to get emotional. We fell in love with that house when we walked in. It's been a nightmare. This gentleman introduced himself as family to Jim and Carol, who sold us her house. It had been in their family. How long? 1918?
Moody's.
The Moody's. So, yeah. Way before 1902 because of the photograph, so it had to have been in the late 1800s. Jim and Carol are in agreement with us because of the immense disrepair. Nobody knew until we started opening up walls, the light demo showed a lot, and I know, please do not think that we take this lightly. I know, I love vintage stuff. I'm a vintage jewelry dealer. But I wish, I wish you guys could see the disrepair of the house and how it has been neglected for a long time. It was, you know, it was Jim's elderly mother living there, and anyways, I don't want to go on and on, but anyways, having this relative come and support means the world to us, and I just wish you guys could see the state of the house. And I'll tell you, I said to the Historical Commissioner after this started becoming a nightmare, I said, "Oh, my gosh, let us bring it back, I mean, let us, like, demolish it. It'll be cheaper because it's a balloon house. Let it be, you know, it's like, I would put it exactly how it is, because that's what we fell in love with the house. We love the look of it, exactly as it is. But to have to redo all the disrepair that was done, it's crazy money." Anyways, thank you for letting me speak again.
Thank you very much. From the DA's, questions or comments? Alderman, Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. I was hoping, Mr. Lambert, it was said that compromise wasn't going to be seen by the commission. Can I get some clarity on what was, if that's germane? The attorney hasn't yelled at me.
It's not germane, because tonight we're simply discussing the demolition. I think that would be germane if, in fact, there was another application filed, or perhaps a private conversation with Mr. Lambert would be appropriate.
Well, I look at this then, and I see most demolition requests are granted in the historic district, so I look at it, the fact that it's a unanimous, it was unanimous by the HPC that to deny demolition gives me pause. It's, the, you know, let's see, trying to think of what I can and can't ask here. So the H, I can't say that. You do say you have an option on the table if denied, though.
I believe that's what Mrs. Forsland can say. The attorney can correct or follow. I can speak for the Forslands. The option we only brought up as a form of possible conciliation should the demolition permit be denied, but as the mayor has said, we are here tonight to proceed on the demolition denial reversal. And also, I would like to reiterate, one of the reasons why I'm here, I don't add much to the Forsland story, but there are serious concerns about the procedural history of their application, about the way that the HPC actually went about that hearing, the fact that they were supposed to notify them of the deficiencies in their application before the hearing, which could be one reason, Mr. Bruno, why it was a 6-0 vote. The Forslands were not given the benefits that they were entitled to, according to the ordinance. So that may be one of the reasons. There also were a couple of other reasons that we're talking about procedure here. That's why I would just like the council to consider this in light of giving my, giving the Forslands all of the benefits that they're entitled to, that they were entitled to, they may not have gotten during the course of this, and as you said, Mr. Bruno, it was a 6-0 vote, but it's our position that those deficiencies contributed to the attitude of the HPC at the time of the hearing, and that's why we're here tonight, to hopefully rectify that.
Well, I've watched most all of that video. Does staff believe that notice and process was followed?
Representative and Commissioner of the City, Mr. Stazen? I would object to have to welcome Mr. Stazen to the podium.
Hi. Hi. I'm fairly new to HPC, about a year now. I met many of you at my installation a year ago, but for those that I didn't, background-wise, I'm a licensed architect, about 45 years' experience. Although I hold an architectural license, I am also a structural engineer and a mechanical. U of I grad, and I specialized over the years in construction, renovation, demolitions, additions, restorations. And I can and am prepared to speak tonight as to the nature of our thought process and what led to the 6-0 vote that was in question.
Glad to hear it.
Okay, if I may, we were provided with a mountain of material, documentation, probably to the nth degree, but a lot of it, I'd say over 50% of the documentation we received, was related to real estate costs, market comps, and what square footage cost may be of properties in similar conditions on a square foot basis. We were also reminded in the presentation of what the initial purchase price of the property was, which then was added to an estimate we saw, which claimed then that the square foot cost of the overall project would approximately be about $650 a square foot for relatively a 1,200-square-foot structure that originally was built in 1840s. The comps that were there, some restored, some in relative conditions of restoration, excluding land costs, straight apples-to-apples in terms of just square footage of the structures, were all represented to be in the $200 per square foot range. So the argument was, obviously, with a cost of over $650, if the structure was renovated, would be a premium of $450 per square foot to restore this property to a livable condition.
So I understand that the cost of the entire project with new construction was represented as being the per-square-foot cost of the historic.
Yes, that is correct. And so the questions that we had along those lines in our thought process was... lines in our thought process was, uh, number one, with the, the purchase price, since the lot is approximately twice the size of any of the other comps presented, what did the value of the property have in mitigating the square foot cost? And what was the land value in relation to what was left of the structure? Secondly, uh, where we saw the initial estimates and, and, and one from a specific builder, I, I did read the letter, there were allowances in there for structural envelope, foundation work, uh, carpentry, windows, uh, and doors, and did not add up nearly to $400,000 in terms of all those allowances. So, the renovation looked to me and others far less than the $450 that was stipulated. So, again, we asked about, you know, specifics of the, these particular estimates, what were some other options? There, there was discussion of an addition to the property. What about if all the expensive spaces were relegated to the new addition? The finishes in the existing building, there is nothing architecturally significant in there to restore. It was basically structural foundation, drywall repairs. There would be a way to mitigate those costs in the existing, reduce the renovation, several other options. Uh, and then the, the one that, that some of us also did not understand, if you remove the structure from the property at this purchase price, given that you're comparing it by comps to other real estate, if you have to reproduce something new, it will still elevate this price far above anything on the market. So, how does this substantially differ from restoration or renovation of the addition, uh, of the, uh, the, uh, existing building? We were also, uh, uh, stipulated that we needed to vote that evening on this demolition because time was of the urgency. So, considering all these factors, speaking for myself and the other commissioners, we voted that, given the historic nature of this structure, and we were having trouble connecting the dots on all these estimates, comps, real estate, bids, et cetera, that, that we could not find a single train with this. We voted against demolition.
Uh, thank you. Uh, do I understand from the packet too that inspection, uh, would, did not happen until after closing? I think, yeah. So, there was no home inspection before closing. Um, uh, okay, thank you.
Alderman Maladra, then Alderman Swanson?
So, Bruno, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure that I understand, be able to store the home to a 1902 photograph, is it possible?
I need to hear. Go ahead.
So, I just, I just can't understand if I heard this correctly. Be able to store the home to a 1902 photograph, would you consider it possible? That is, in fact, what you intended to do with the house. So, these are the areas of the city that you want to do.
That's not true. Because...
One moment, sir.
I don't like to store something that doesn't exist.
Well, it doesn't exist today. It doesn't exist. It was changed. It was, it was put in as an, an enclosed porch. We were going to, we were going to, we, well, we weren't going to demolish the front, uh, the, the enclosed porch. We were going to open it up. And I guess technically you would be demolishing it, but we would be putting it back to how it was in the 1902 photograph. But the whole point of, I did all the comps that this gentleman had said. I did it because I thought it would help to understand, most of those, these properties have been well sustained. They have been well cared for throughout the years. This property has not. I've been, I mean, I have been to so many open houses. I love doing it. It's, it's a, it's a pastime of mine. I see the old homes. They're, they're very simple, but they have been sustained. They have been kept up. This house has not. And Jim and Carol, uh, they, they agree, but it's been in such disrepair. My point was, when I was speaking with Michael, because Michael and I, we met at the house a lot. We talked on the phone a lot, emailed back and forth. Our biggest concern was that the jelly kitchen and the workers cottage was, and that's what we are finding, not only just the balloon, but that's, we knew about that. But those two pieces of the puzzle, to save them, I think, is crazy. Now, for the Geneva Historical Commission, you can't even see the workers cottage. You can see the jelly kitchen from the west side, but I've always been told that the north and the west side were the only things that the Geneva Historical Commission cared about preserving. So, if we could have, if, if they would have worked with us a little bit, we could have had the, the, uh, workers cottage and the jelly kitchen taken out, which, uh, we were told by the Geneva Historical Commissioner, uh, before we even closed, that, that jelly kitchen, that old, you know, it's, it's a, it's a little square that was built, uh, in the nineteen, well, 1940s. Um, that used to be the jelly kitchen. Now, that's not historical. That's not, don't worry about it. So, my point of contention is, if we could, if, if we could have had some, some meeting of the minds, we could have, you know, had that, uh, porch reconstructed. You never would have been able to have seen whether that, uh, workers cottage or jelly kitchen had been taken down, 'cause you can't see it. So, it never made any sense to me that throughout all the times that we were trying our hardest to make it work, when we finally said, "What other choice do we have but demolish it and rebuild it?" That's when I went for all the, um, the comps. To show that these historical properties that are, like ours, real simple farmhouses, have been maintained throughout the years. And they're magnificent, absolutely. But the whole point of contention with this is that the disrepair is so major. We had no idea.
If you lose the jelly kitchen, if you tear that and you tear the workers cottage, what remains is still financially feasible to, uh...
Well, we, we wouldn't have to move that, put in a foundation, and then have to move it back, which, honestly speaking, we have been told that is hardly any money at all. That's not true. We have been told by the Geneva Historical Commissioner that...
Uh, forgive me, Mrs. Forslin. I'm, I'm gonna...
Okay.
...confirm with the city attorney here. I, I believe this line of questioning speaks to the potential alternative, as opposed...
Yes.
Okay. Uh, 'cause it, it, to me, it's, it's as if we're...
I, I, I'm, I'm finding this. I, I, I'm tracking you.
If there is, if there is a feasible alternative, this period would be the house. So, if there is a feasible alternative, they no longer possess, pursue that feasible alternative. But the Yale does not. So, I'm just trying to understand. I thought what you said earlier was, there is a feasible alternative, that in fact, they proposed originally. And so, I'm thinking, should, or that, or maybe...
Well, it was turned down. It was turned down. And, um, I didn't hear that. I'm sorry. So, um, we feel we were not treated with respect, um, at the historical commissioners' meeting, um, when it was denied. Um, and I understand the passion. I, trust me, I understand the passion. Um, and I understand what their role is. But we have worked very hard at trying to find alternatives, and nobody wanted to talk to us. Nobody wanted to meet us halfway. It was either their way or the highway. And it got to a point where it was like, you know, what other choice do we have? Other, we even offered, we, it was suggested to us that the property be put on the market for a dollar. You move it.
So, paraphrase that. If there's no feasible alternative, as HPC says, there is a feasible alternative.
And it was, yeah, and, and, well, but, yeah, well, of course, you know, I...
Do you wanna speak? 'Cause...
No, wait.
Okay, anyways.
We're gonna move on to the next, uh, council member. Alderman Swanson?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm looking at the items that we were asked to review with respect to this request. And, and I'm not sure the information we have are sufficient for us to make that decision. And I'll give you some examples. Uh, number one, are the technical and economic feasibility issues described by the applicant persuasive enough to warrant demolition? And, and my question there would be, we were provided one quotation for $468,000. To me, that's not sufficient to make this decision. We should have multiple quotations that would confirm that amount. Number two, are the options for rehabilitation so limited and cost of rehabilitation so great that demolition is the only viable option? Again, uh, having one quotation is not sufficient in my mind to make that decision. Are there, could, could there be another builder who could do it for $200,000? You know, I, I heard that there was a, a massive packet that was not provided to us in our packet. We did not see that information. And then, uh, the other point that we were looking at was whether a reasonable effort has been made by the applicant to find a compatible use that would require minimal alterations of the building. We did not see plans for, uh, a new building utilizing the old structure being rehabilitated as well. We didn't see that information. I was told that, or they was mentioned that there were multiple architects, but, but we did not see what plans were drawn or what the costs would be for that, to make a determination that the economic vitality is not there. So, my question is, is there more information that could be provided? And, and based on the insufficient data that has been provided so far, I'm not sure we have enough information to make a decision today.
Well, when we went to the Geneva Historical Commission, we had asked, well, prior, we had asked for four, we had four contractors. Two of them, one, well, no, we had, yeah, we did have four. One required, um, quite a bit of, a few thousand dollars upfront just to give us the bid, the quote, the bid. And we were like, hmm. So, the next one, this is, this is what was very disheartening to us. Because the other one did exactly what you were saying. It was crazy expensive when we came back with our drawings. That should have had nothing to do with it because what he was doing was he was absorbing the exorbitant cost of rehab and to make our building safe, absorbing it into, into the new part of the home. So, it was like, when the numbers came back, we were like, whoa. We wanted a 2,500 max, comfortable, uh, with a deep basement, a ranch-style home. So, that's when we were like, whoa, 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 this is crazy. So, the one contractor, Inmatavia, had said, "No, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, um, uh, separate it out." And we were like, "Well, why wouldn't you?" So, the other gentleman that was in Naperville, he was the one that had all of the contingencies. The, the bids that came in had nothing to do with, because I think the HPC became, uh, very combative with us, saying, "Well, what about, you know, fancy, uh, kitchen appliances and blah, blah, blah?" And we were like, "No, no, no." This is, that's why we did not want to have any of the new part of the house included, 'cause that's not relative to the historical part of the house. We, e- even with a, a postage stamp. So, we found one contractor who was willing to go to the house with his subcontractors. That's when they bid out each job. The other gentleman in Naperville gave us a lot of contingencies. And we all know contingencies, you know, allowances, et cetera. We felt like that wasn't as accurate as the other one, but we did include the two, um, the two bids.
But there are many contractors out there, though.
There are many.
I'm gonna interrupt again respectfully.
Yes.
I, I have been advised, and forgive me for not, um, tuning into this earlier, but there was a public hearing held at the Historic Preservation Commission, correct?
Correct.
And during that public hearing, much of what has been discussed tonight was also provided.
Correct.
Therefore, we have before us in our packet this evening, all the evidentiary information delivered during that hearing. So, if a council member feels that the information is insufficient, that's his or her right to do so.
Sure.
But we cannot, based on counsel with the counselor, ask for more information above and beyond what was provided in the hearing.
Okay, gotcha.
We cannot do so this evening.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Bob Forslin.
How are you?
Spells the same. Thanks. I'm fine, thanks. Um, yes, I want to just clarify a couple of points real quick. You do have the packet. You have the information. And no deference to, um, this gentleman, the market values don't comprise half of the package. If you look at it, you can see it for yourself and you can determine on your own. Um, I, I just wanted to point out, if there was something lacking in the information, and this is part of our contention, concern, is that the ordinance, we submitted the documents, and if there was something that was lacking or insufficient, we were supposed to receive notice ten days after that. We received nothing. So, we assumed that our proposal was complete. Furthermore, just to comment, uh, just to comment on the alternate, the other construction, the ordinance also states that the demolition request shall not include other construction on the site. It's only to be dealt with the demolition. And that's what we did. I read that ordinance front and back more times than I care to repeat. And we tried to follow that to the letter. So, we think by, if, if we were short on something, we haven't done this before. Somebody should have said something. We didn't say, "Hey, you're missing this," or "This doesn't make sense," or "There's new information there," or, you know, "This is gonna be viewed as a lark," as one of the commissioners said. We would have filled in the blanks. Um, I, I've got a mountain of documentation. So, um, I just want to clarify those points. I will, um, I just also wanted to point out that nobody from the HPC has actually seen this building inside. Um, and the cost, the cost is really simple. I tried to make it, in my mind, as simple as it could be. Fair market value for a property is the living space divided by, uh, the cost divided by the living... living space, period. So we did. It's 200 bucks a foot. Check our comps. Nowhere, and I've watched that video also more times than I'd care to watch, nobody can, made, nobody contested our market value assessment at that meeting. Nobody said a word about it. There's a lot of talk about cost, very little talk about market value. So it's 200 bucks a foot, and we got to put in $500,000 to fix all the structural stuff and get it livable. Maybe it's 400 grand. You know, we added 10%. It's roughly, all of this is documented, by the way, and if you read the supplemental data, you'll see the cost of the other quote that we had. All of this stuff is well documented. So whether it's $430,000 or $500,000, you still take a quarter million dollar house, and you have to sink 400 to 500,000 in it, now it's 600 grand, and the market value's $200,000. So we look at the clause in the, in the ordinance that talks about, it was quoted earlier, and you guys are probably more familiar with it than I am, that if you've got to invest so much money, but it's, you know, it talks about an economic return. And that frankly triggered some of the people in the audience. We're not after this to make money, but we don't want to go, we don't want to go underwater. I mean, that's not, that's crazy. We're willing to, we were willing to throw 100,000 into when we bought it, and we thought that would be reasonable. And we thought, okay, cool, it's got a big lot, you know, time, it'll be okay. But not 500,000. So, anyway, just want to clarify a few of those points. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Swanson?
I guess my final question would be, the, in the home inspection, and then certainly the mold inspection occurred very late in the game. And the mold inspection was actually prior, immediately prior to requesting the demolition. So I was interested in knowing why that was conducted at that point in time, and why the building inspection, home inspection, happened so late in the game after your purchase?
Well, we explained this at the, at the public hearing. So we found this opportunity, it was a sale by owner, and we worked with them, signed a contract, it was October, they had another, they had another bid. We looked it over, we, we had HPC representative there, we've had, we were on the phone with Illinois, we had contractors there, we have a little bit of experience rebuilding homes. We had to make a choice, because they wanted to close in December. It was just not an option for us. So we were aware, but until we opened up the place, I mean, some light demo work to so that you could see behind walls and ceilings and things like that, then the numbers came in significantly higher. And they're, and they're going to be significantly higher for, you know, whoever owns that place. It's not just us. It's just, I'm still, I struggle at the, at the public hearing, had nobody at the, on the council, addressed that clause in the ordinance relative to putting in so much money that it doesn't make any economic sense. That point was never addressed, other than to say, we're not here to help you make money type of comments. So I've just, we've just been following the ordinance, and we're trying really hard. We came up with this compromise idea, and to answer your question specifically, we don't have a quote for just the one and a half story piece, we don't. But we know where most of the cost is buried. It's buried in the parts that were suggested to us. Why don't we compromise and tear just those down and save the original portion? Okay, we're willing to roll the dice on that, because I know where all the cost is buried, and it's in those two pieces that we, that we're mentioning. And it's a win-win. City gets to keep the one and a half story. We can make it work. We're going to spend more money than we want to, but as a compromise, we liked the lot, we liked the location, it's close to our other building there, all those reasons. We just think it's a win-win, and I understand that's not the vote, but I just had to say it.
Alderman Swanson, so has the floor.
And my, my final point, I understand what you're saying with respect to market value. And I understood the $200 per square foot number that you came up with. The, the problem I have with that is it's approximately what you paid for the building, what you paid for the property as is, which allows little, if any, room to improve the deficiencies.
You're, you're absolutely right.
And, and the, and the problem I have with that is, then that means that any structure in the historic district is at risk if you're going to follow that logic. And if you're going to pay market value, including land, and then come up with a market-based reason to, to demolish it.
Well, then I would ask the council to explain, if you can, what that clause means, and why is it in the ordinance that talks about spending way much money that it's over economic, you know, economic value. I'm misquoting it, but it's referenced in our letters. So I just, you know, then you can explain that, that would be great, because I look at that and think, no. But your first assertion was, when we bought it, we paid $194 per square foot, and we knew we were going to have to spend 100 grand. That's what we had in our head. Okay, we can swallow that. 500 grand? Now you're so far underwater that this just doesn't make sense. And, and, and.
I understand. And the piece that, that I don't see is, it was mentioned that when you initially looked at it, you had a, back in the envelope, quotation of 100,000 from a contractor, and then it would, it moved to 500,000. The piece that I don't see is how it moved from 100,000 to 500,000, and what, what items were so deficient that created such an expense? So that's the piece that.
Sure. I can tell you, just generally speaking, half of the house does not have a foundation. That's the number one. And it's a balloon-framed house, and it's not supported structurally, soundly. So this worker's cottage was shoved into the side of this one and a half story home, and it's not supported strong, safely, properly. And I'm not, I'm not an architect and an engineer, but I could tell. But, anyway.
Thank you. Before I recognize Alderman Bruno for a second time, anyone else from the dais wish to speak? Alderman Berghardt?
Could our Historic Preservation Commissioner come up? Would you mind?
Sure.
Thanks for being here tonight. For everybody, I can tell this is very emotional, and there's a lot of, a lot of good intentions with this property on both sides. Did the HPC get to talk about any kind of compromise, or the, the idea?
Well, before my tenure, there were other meetings. Michael has the dates, I believe in 16 and 17. There were other drawings presented to the HPC. But apparently, with estimates or design, it was felt that these were no longer viable solutions, and then we entered into this demo phase, which was the meeting that we voted on, and the only thing on the table that night to us was a request for demolition.
Mr. Lieber, can you discuss that? I mean.
Well, I'm concerned that we have, what's the word?
Leached, leaked, leached?
Outside the record that was presented for our discussion purposes tonight, and this is my best impressionation of Attorney Sandak. We have, stay in this box that is called the official public record based on the hearing held by the HPC. So any attempt to go outside those ramparts, I think jeopardizes the integrity of our duty, which is to serve as the appellate court, if you will.
Well, and if I may, that's exactly was our purview that night, was to vote on demolition.
Correct.
There were no other solutions being proposed that were on the table that night of the meeting. It was permission to demolish.
Here's a question that I think follows this fair. I mean, what is lost if this building is demolished?
Boy, it has a significant history. Michael could speak to that better than I, but it was originally in 99 by Architectural Survey, considered to be a contributing property, built circa 1845, additions 1891, 97, '02, and '40. So there were several, and it is a category of house, some of the earliest residential cottages of the period. And now, I guess by a more recent survey, it's felt to be, rather than contributing, significant. So there is, and there's documentation in the file from Historic Preservation, yes, et cetera, of the value of this particular property in terms of historic and to the community.
All right, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Kilburg?
You come back. Oh, sorry. Just a couple of questions. I'm trying to ascertain, in your expert opinion, would $500 per square foot be an economic hardship in relationship to conventional construction?
Yes, and I'm also, when, when we evaluated it, I was trying to, the bid information we had was very limited, but how, given the, the cost of new construction, could this almost double in value for a rather simple framed house? I did see the, the specific, as I mentioned earlier, amount for the foundation in terms of allowance and the structural envelope. So given those two, it was approximately 100,000. Now, there is mechanical, a wiring as such, there was allowance for, in that $500,000 bid, to restore and repair siding, and I said fenestration issues and doors. Roof was mentioned, but not priced out. So I'm at a loss as well as our other commissioners to kind of figure out how we got up to $450,000. The, I, I still do not have a clear understanding on that.
Would you say, then, that the validity of that figure weighed heavily on the decision to, of the commission to proceed with the demolition, to deny the demolition?
It, it was a factor. I wouldn't say the sole factor, but we did hear that, certainly from the owners, that this would represent a rather large financial challenge, which at those numbers, obviously it would. So I think, you know, it, it factored into our, our discussion, but I think that, that we generally felt that there could be some viable alternatives in terms of renovation costs far less than that 450,000.
Thank you.
But again, our, our task was to approve demolition or not.
Anyone else wish to speak before I recognize Alderman Bruno for a second time?
Oh, please.
Oh, yes, sir?
May, may please the council, I would just like to address what the gentleman referred to just recently, as far as, I'd just like to bring the council's attention to the fact that, to me, this sounds like the HPC was substituting their judgment for the judgment of the contractors, for the bids that they had. Basically, what they're telling the Forslands is, you know, go out and get these, these bids, you know, bring them to us. Okay, well, you know, those are high. You know, that's too high. We don't, we don't think that's right. Where was the notice of that before the hearing? And that's why we're here. Like you said, we're because of, because of Latchees. We can only talk about what happened in the prior proceeding. Okay, that's what we're talking about. That's the whole issue with this, with why we're here, because the proceeding with the public hearing in October of last year was not, they were not given the benefits that they should have had. We're talking about these, the fact that he said they had to connect the dots, because there weren't enough bids, things like that. It's a, it's, you know, I don't know how much more they could have done. They, they did the research, they looked at comparables, they talked to numerous contractors. The fact that, you know, the HPC is going to say now, you know, well, okay, there's that, and we can't say that they're wrong, because we don't have any, we don't have our, our own bid, we didn't have our own guy go out there and look at it. They're going to say, well, it's not quite enough. Well, they, they should have known that, and pursuant to the ordinance, they should have been notified of that deficiency. They weren't. So as far as what we're talking about right now, as far as the procedural history of it, as far as the Latchees, I would just like the council to take that under advisement. And also, as far as the Alderman, as far as the policy argument about, you know, if we're talking about, okay, if you have to dump a lot of money into this, is every historic home going to be at risk? No. As, as my clients have talked about, as Mrs. Forsland has, has talked about, this house has run down. Again, she's not just saying it. You, you know, it would be nice if you could go see the house, it would give you some context. It's, it's in very, very, very significant disrepair. This is not your typical historic home, where, you know, it's, you know, people buying it, and they have to do some things to fix it up and things like that. They don't want to just knock this house down. It's, it's the point that the economic return, there's, there's, there's not going to be any. And I know there was some correspondence with Mr. Lambert that I believe is part of the record, about the fact that, you know, this is supposed to be where you're going to be living and things like that. Why don't you, I may be paraphrasing here, but why, you know, why don't you spend the money? Because this, this is going to be your home. Well, there's two sides to that coin, okay? You know, you might want to spend money on your home if you're going to, if you have the intention of living there, which I think is what that's going to, is making sure the Forslands want to stay there. This is something they're, they're not going to just flip this thing. But the, the other danger to that is, you know, they're reaching retirement age. If they get underwater big time on this, what's going to happen? You know, they're, they're, if they have to move somewhere else, if their situation changes, you're forcing these people to take on a significant economic hardship, and they would be completely trapped. And I, as, as the architect did, you know, talk about, I think that the analysis that they did was sound to a point, but as I said, I'm here to talk about the procedural safeguards that the ordinance afforded the Forslands, and they simply were not given those. And I think that that illustrates the point, is that the estimates that they, they would have been comfortable having more. Okay, that's something that should have been brought up. It's, it's telling the Forslands, oh, yeah, no, you know, we need, we need this, and this, and this, and then, and then when you, and then when they give it to the, you know, to the HPC or to whoever it is, it's, you know, then going back and saying, well, okay, but it's, it's, it's not enough. And I just think, as far as the context that we're here for right now, it, it really doesn't hold water, and I think that's why the council seriously needs to consider the fact that they were not giving, that they were not given a proper hearing that they were entitled to pursuant to ordinance. And that's not just lip service. I think that what the architect just said illustrates that point. They could have, they could have, they could have provided more information to help their cause. They were not given the opportunity to do that, they were never informed that they had to. That's, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. I think one of my questions was answered. To the reasonable return, most demolition requests are able to meet the threshold of the HPC to, to demonstrate hardship. It sounds like the, the numbers provided weren't discernible enough for them to trust them. And they haven't, they haven't seen an alternative. To Mr. Lambert, or Mr. DeGroot, does, does our ordinance have any provisions for us getting our own estimate? Well, I keep coming back that virtually every demolition request does seem to meet this threshold, and this is, this is a, this really does define that corner of that, that block. My last point is to, and I keep hammering on this with staff, but can you, I'm still, I think there's some confusion with the wording on the, in the packet. You know, it says recommendations, suggested action, and that is listed as approval of the resolution. I just want to be clear, the city has not recommend, we are basically taking the Historic Preservation's recommendation.
That's correct. We're taking the volunteer commissioners who make up that body, their recommendation is to deny the demolition. This is not a recommendation from professional staff, per se.
So a nay vote would stay the demolition and leave the house?
That's correct. An aye vote would support the motion to reverse.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? We do have a motion, we do have a second. Is everyone clear on what their char- Is everyone clear on what their charge is?
No, please, Ms. Lambert.
Yes, let's state the motion, and I should also note that this does require a two-thirds vote to reverse. The motion is written in the affirmative, and that is, consider Resolution 2019-71 reversing the October 16, 2018 determination of the Historic Preservation Commission to deny the demolition of the single-family residence and detached garage at 428 Ford Street. So, if you vote aye, you are voting to reverse the determination of the Historic Preservation Commission. If you vote nay, you are in essence saying, I support the determination of the HPC.
So, I vote as opposed to the demolition.
Mr. Clerk, whenever you are available?
Bruno?
Nay.
Nigh.
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 The motion has failed, ladies and gentlemen, with one aye vote and eight nay votes. This matter is concluded. There being no additional business for this special city council meeting. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Marx. We are all adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.